Welcome, everybody. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council, the City Council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for June 2nd, 2020. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths.
Present.
And Mayor Mass.
Present. Our invocation tonight is made by Pastor Dudley. I remember, I think so, right, Jan?
Yes.
And there he is. Pastor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, let's, let's take a moment and pray. So, Father, we, we look to you during times of, of peace and during times of unrest, and we find in you the, the strength and the grace that we need. So, Lord, today, as our council meets and as they discuss the city's business, I pray that your spirit would give them wisdom, that you would give them guidance. And, Lord, we do pray for our nation during this time of, of unrest. We pray that, that peace would become a reality, that there would be reconciliation, and that there would be a, a, a true end to hate that works systemically through our nation. So, we thank you, Father, that we can turn to you in these times. We thank you for those that are leading us. We pray, God, your wisdom and grace be upon them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Now, go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Pro Tem Robert Griffiths, would you leave us?
Please join me in salute to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance
allegiance
to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty
and justice for all.
Thank you for that. City Attorney, would you report on closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I have one reportable action item, and that pertains to the resolution of the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, placing immediate moratorium on residential and commercial eviction in light of COVID-19. The City Council voted unanimously to extend the order until, to extend its local city order to June 30th.
That can be reported.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to approve the agenda. This will prove the, we'll be approving the consent calendar in whole. Is anybody like to pull anything for consent calendar?
Move, we approve the agenda.
Gonna include the full consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Back second.
Mr. Griffiths seconded. Motion by Ms. Pye. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar, Joe?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths.
Aye.
And Mayor Mass.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
This time, we'll move to, uh, public comments. Um, we're gonna pursue the Brown Act. Any persons may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Uh, members are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. Do I have any public comments, Joe?
Yes, Roberta, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have one, uh, which is Brad Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, hello, this is Brad Anderson. I live in the City Ranch Mirage. I, I wanted to comment on three items today, uh, on the non-agenda, uh, uh, item or portion of this meeting. And first, uh, I know I've talked to, well, I haven't talked to, but I've emailed a city clerk concerning, uh, registering, uh, to have access for phone numbers and access codes to participate in your meetings. And, uh, I don't see any reason why that could not be printed on the agenda itself, uh, and you could have the Zoom meeting and also telephone numbers that people could call, uh, because, you know, I know this is, uh, unusual times, but, you know, I'm sure that's a Brown Act violation, uh, to have to register to get this information. So, and the second, uh, portion I would like to talk about is on the 5th of May, you had a closed session meeting. I wrote a letter to you concerning face masks or, um, face coverings, I guess you'd call them now. Uh, I, I very feel that, uh, the people of your city should really have some involvement in that, and they should be able to, uh, voice their opinions, nay or yay on that. So, I would hope that maybe you could consider that in a future meeting, maybe if not the next meeting, uh, to let the people have some kind of say in that mandate. And three, number three, my last one, it goes to mosquitoes. And, uh, and I know your city is the lucky one because you have all that wind that blows through there and you're pretty dry. You don't have a lot of water sources really that collects in, in your city, but you do have some. So, and, you know, La Quinta has, um, St. Louis sepsitis, and so does Palm Desert and Western Iowa and Palm Desert now, too. And, uh, I don't know if most people are aware, but I used to work for the Vector Control District back in 2017, and, um, I actually got reprimanded for working in Indian Wells and Palm Desert just shortly before they discovered Western Iowa. And, and, uh, the reason I was going there is because a lot of those sites, the known sites to the Vector District were not seen for close to six months. And, uh, and, and that's, that's a concern of mine, and I think that might be what's going on now. And I know the workforce is probably slim, if not, you know, the feet-on-the-ground type of people that actually do the work. They have a lot of administrators. It's very top-heavy. But, uh, hopefully you can consider all this stuff. I know you have a trustee that sits, or, um, a council member that sits on the, uh, on that, uh, Vector District as a trustee, and he should really be inputting and, and, uh, letting the citizens know what's going on. Well, thank you very much. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
You also. Any other public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor. Is that right, Roberta?
No, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the City Manager's report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Doria, can you give us an update tonight on the COVID-19?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, at this point, uh, we are still in accelerated phase two as far as reopening of businesses are concerned. Uh, so what that means is that in-person dining, um, is now permitted at restaurants. Um, retail shopping establishments are also permitted, uh, to, uh, you know, continue with their reopening plan for operations. Uh, short-term rentals are also now allowed with some provisions. Um, I do want to, um, make sure, though, that I mention that that is specific to short-term rentals, not large-scale hotels. Um, we do still have a local, um, requirement for our residents to wear masks, and we're thankful that our community has, um, complied with that and, and have worked with us. That is part of helping to, uh, ensure that we continue to keep our cases down here locally by protecting, um, those in the community. Um, tonight, as our city attorney mentioned, our City Council extended the moratorium on, um, commercial and residential evictions through June 30th. Um, and we will continue to keep you updated, uh, via the updates that the mayor and I put out, uh, our social media and our website as we're able to, uh, move further along into, um, uh, the reopening as the state permits that. Thank you. Um, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Doria. Chief, can you give us an update on the testing site facility?
The testing site facility has asked today to go through July 31st. They're very happy with the site. It's the third busiest out of the nine. Um, they've tested over 1,200 people. Um, I'm going to give you a phone number that you could call because they still have appointments daily. Um, the testing site actually starts, uh, Tuesday through Saturday. The phone number is 888-634-1123, or you could go to, um, www.rivcoph.org, and you can find out information and also how to set up an appointment through online. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate it. Uh, Jeffrey, can you discuss our current finances for this fiscal year?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so as of June 1st, the city has $15.8 million in revenue and expended and had spent $19.4 million in expenditures for the consolidated general fund. Uh, not included in these revenue amounts is what the city has received, uh, for sales tax, property tax, and triple-voila. These revenues actually received late last week and, um, haven't been posted yet to, haven't been posted with general letter yet. So, those will be done this, this week. Uh, revenues for our dispensary taxes are right at this point are exceeding the budget. Through April, the city has received over $1.4 million, and we still have two months worth, uh, two months in the fiscal year remaining. So, estimating that the actual dispensary taxes for this fiscal year could probably reach close to $1.6 million. Um, in addition, there are actually, we actually have higher-than-anticipated transient occupancy tax revenue. So, there are some higher-than-anticipated payments for the months of March and April. So, uh, they're actually these, which then makes our, uh, and our revenue higher than what I'd estimated after, after the reductions. So, I've made a revised ending fund balance at, uh, 6/30/2020 for the general consolidated general fund, which is, uh, 10.8 million, which is estimated to be $10.8 million, of which 2.4 million will be in the marijuana reserve.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate it. Danny, can you give us an update on Palm Drive plus our two separate upcoming traffic signals?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes, the Palm Drive Phase 1 is the, uh, from Queen of Ventura to Two Bunch Palms. That project is on its final punch list items. This week, there were three remaining as of yesterday. Those, those should be completed this week, and the project will be closed out. Uh, the Phase 2 project, which is from Two Bunch to Pearson, the contractor completed slurry seal last Tuesday and Wednesday, May 26th and 27th, and they are scheduled to complete all striping this week. There will be some night striping and some striping completed during the day. Uh, they'll also be adjusting some manholes and valve cans this week, and we expect to close out the project by June 12th and only any final minor items remaining after that. SCE and their contractor will then come in afterwards and install the streetlights. There will be a total of 17 new streetlights that are going to be installed. The conduits, the footings, everything has been installed from the ground up. It'll just be SCE and their contractor to come in and install the actual streetlight structures. The Palm, the traffic signals, the first traffic signal is on Palm Drive and Desert View, the second one on Pearson and Choya. Uh, the contractor is scheduled to come and do the conduit pool boxes installation on June 8th. The standing of these traffic signal poles is scheduled for June 15th, and we expect both projects to be completed by July 31st. That includes having the traffic signals up, having traffic signals working, all, uh, detections working, all truncated domes, all ADA, um, ramps, and striping be completed by July 31st on both locations. And also, just a quick update, we currently are working on two projects in the parks. Uh, we are installing the park shade structures on Mission Springs Park and Tedesco Park. Uh, last week, the footings were dug out, the cages, uh, the, uh, the steel cages and the concrete was poured, and this Thursday, the poles will begin to be set on Mission Springs Park, um, which was expected to be completed by June 15th or the week of June 15th. Tedesco Park will follow and be completed the week of June 22nd. So, we will see some brand-new park shade structures installed, even though our parks are currently closed. And the entry monument, the monument was completed last Friday. Uh, there is some typo on the wording that will be corrected these next two weeks. And there's also a, we're obtaining some contractors, uh, proposals for extending the block wall. Um, and there was already, uh, uplighting and some re-landscaping to that area that was included in a contract. I expect that contract and that project to be completed in about two to three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll move to Mayor and Councilmember comments. I'll start with Mr. Gardner tonight.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I really, uh, have nothing to report this week. I haven't had any outside border commission meeting since our last council meeting, but I, I do want to make a brief comment about the, uh, the protests and the riots going on across the nation in the wake of the terrible murder of George Floyd in the hands of a few police officers in Minneapolis. We are very fortunate to have a great police department in our city. Chief Henson and his officers do an outstanding job of keeping us all safe. In the past, when we've had officers who have acted inappropriately, the chief has taken swift and decisive action, and I commend him and his staff for that. I wouldn't expect anything less. That being said, there is always room for improvement, to listen, to learn from each other. We all care deeply about this city, residents and police alike. It's often a thankless job. We hate it when a police officer pulls us over for a traffic violation and write a ticket. But we love it when they show up when we're in danger or we're having a robbery or something. And we all owe them a great debt of gratitude and thanks. And while systemic racism still exists here and all over, we can work to eliminate it. As most of you know, uh, my partner, Eric, is African-American, and while a 58-year-old white guy like me gets to take things for granted often, he does not. I see how it affects him, and that affects me. I also worry he'll run into a rogue cop or an avowed racist during a drive home one night, and I never know how it feels to be black or to face the things that he does and others do and to endure those things. I cannot feel what he feels and what you feel, but I see that you are all hurting and that you are tired. As elected officials, it's incumbent upon all of us to work with the community, to address systemic racism in all forms. I'm not sure how. I don't have the answer. But I can let you know that I hear your voice, and I will listen to you, and I will work with you, and I will walk with you, and I will stand by you, and I will do all that I can to help heal these deep wounds, racism in our community and in our nation. Former President George W. Bush today said, "Achieving justice for all is the duty of all. It will require a consistent, courageous, and creative effort. We serve our neighbors best when we try to understand their experience. We love our neighbors as ourselves when we treat them as equals in both protection and compassion. There is a better way, the way of empathy and shared commitment, and a bold caption in a piece rooted in justice. And I am confident that together we will choose the better way." And I have to agree with those comments. Thank you for that time, Mr. Mayor. That's all that I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Pye?
With COVID-19, you got shut down. Many of you lost your jobs, and you're hungry. Then you watch what's on TV, and there's people that are rioting, and you're watching people lose their jobs. They're hungry. And what are you supposed to do? My suggestion is that all of us can do something. And it's not just Black Lives Matter. We state in the Pledge of Allegiance, liberty and justice for all. That's what we need to work on. And I'm gonna leave that alone. But I'll tell you, on the 29th, no, I'm sorry, it was on May 30th, the Rotary celebrated their internet, their interact club, which is one of the ways that we help our youth. And they gave me a sign. The interact people that they went to, and I believe the high school seniors deserve it, was Jesse Galvarez, Bianca Cusel, Thomasia, Leslie Humana, they, they Jesus, Alex Rivera, Yes Sura Flores, Elisa Nieto, Zara Food, and Andrea Garcia Sousa, Amy, Amy Pacello, Anthony Correll, Mitchell Lopez, Elizabeth Gonzalez, Alfredo Gutierrez Perez, John Terry, and Augustine Acquier. Also, the Women's Club gave donations of 2, 2, 2,500 each, and part of this was, uh, part of this scholarship donation was given by Anyella Zabala, our former council person. And these recipients were Abigail Vera, who's going to UCLA to be a physician, Augustine Agriar, UCLA Biology, Thomasia, UC Santa Barbara, a surgeon, Xavier Ford, UC Santa Barbara, Chemistry, Arlette Gutierrez Perez, UC Santa Barbara, um, San Bernardino, a nurse. And there was a second round for $1,000. Edwin Arrojos, and he's our 219 high school recipient with, and will be a sophomore at CSU, Dominus Hills, as a math teacher. Um, the committee that did this was Jeannie Van Buren, Patty Mathis, Bonnie Newsom, and Sylvia Runt Roundtree. So, there are things that we can do for each other. And the county is giving out 500, are giving out, um, $10,000 each, um, uh, for, for companies that are 50,000 or more. They're gonna vote on how to distribute it on, I think it's today, but I'll give you the, um, website, www.rivcoph.org. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Russ? Councilmember Betts, I'm sorry. Russ works. That's good. So, my grandson and I had gotten tired of, uh, the COVID emergency food that we had stocked up. We decided to go add a few pounds at a local fast food restaurant down by, uh, Palm and Two Bunch. And there's a woman standing there with a sign that said, um, um, you know, "End Hate," something like that. And so, we're sitting in the car eating lunch. We're watching, and it was really interesting to see how many people walked up to her and gave her a hug. And it was just, we sat there for like 15 minutes while reading and watched this. So, we drove by, we rolled down the window, said, "Love you," and she says, "Love you back," and it was just a really nice exchange. And, um, so, you know, I think we're looking for solutions. Um, that's part of it, is just look at everybody as an individual and, uh, do what you can to tell people you love them. And, uh, like she said, let's end this hate. Um, so, it, it just struck me as a, it was a really nice time, especially watching these people, just perfect strangers going up and giving each other hugs. Um, now, I want to get into a few items that have gone on around the city. I've had a few meetings. I'll get into a couple of those. But I'm gonna go through a couple of issues that have been coming up. One is the debris removal, and some of this is maybe hopefully get a reaction out of staff or response from staff or at least bring it to their attention. But a while back, we had a big problem with large, uh, debris, uh, stacking up on vacant lots. The council put in a program, was it three years ago, and people who are continually complaining about the debris on their vacant lots started calling us and saying, "Wow, that's working. Thanks." And then the program, I think, has morphed to anything sitting out on the side of the road is getting picked up. And, um, what we've, you know, it's a lot of stuff getting hauled out of here over three years. And we got a couple of residents who are very keen on letting us know when something is sitting on the side of the road. I think I get emails, everybody else does probably three or four a day, which is great. That's very helpful. Uh, but they pointed out that a couple of items have been sitting out for a couple of weeks, and rather than getting picked up rather quickly. So, I started to look into that, and I know I've called in a few times to get stuff picked up, and, uh, usually it does pretty quickly. Either they get it on their scheduled route, which they're taking, or they'll make a diversion and go get it. But it seems now there's a couple of times where, and I don't know if we're, we've changed the program, changed the focus, but a big part of the problem has been the multifamily units and the rentals have been generating so much, uh, debris, mattresses, old TVs, what you name it, just leaving it out there, that it's been a problem. And we basically wanted the landlords to take care of that. But the question comes, are we, have we put into some type of change in this program now where we're telling this crew, "Don't pick that up," that we're now going to start, um, talking to the landlord and have them pick it up? My idea is, is that whatever we're gonna do, the priority one is to make sure this junk and debris doesn't start building up on our streets again, that we remove it immediately or as close to immediately as we can. And then if there's some type of education campaign that needs to go on for the landlords, that that go on in parallel. Maybe the crews document it, take a picture, get everything they need, and then go on. And I see the city manager ready to reply. I'll be quiet for a second.
Councilmember Betts, we haven't changed anything. Uh, the, the only situation is, is occasionally we'll wind up with one of, one of the recent, uh, reports you gave us, there was extenuating circumstances at that location. We had a homeless person living there refusing to leave. We were working with the, uh, property owner to get it cleaned up, and oftentimes, we're not allowed just to pull, pull onto private property and pull everything off of it that I would like to. And other situations are, if our, um, DVD cannot pick up the trash fast enough, our code compliance people go out and do so. So, they're out there, and you'll see them every morning on Palm Drive. You'll see them on all the major thoroughfares, and then we can respond to calls for service or they do on-site location. So, some may have to sit a little bit. It's not because we wanted to, it's because of the circumstances involved. But we do, in fact, respond, as you know, as quickly as possible, and we give reports back to council on those items that are specifically addressed or asked for by council.
Okay, so, great. That's great. We haven't changed the program. I did talk to, uh, Chris at DVD, who's in the contract company for that prod, program, and he said, "Since everybody was sitting at home for so long, they kinda, their honey-do list got like, 'Hey, why don't you finally move that thing out to the, the curb.'" So, I think there was a huge increase in that. So, all right, but I just wanted to make sure we hadn't done anything to change the, that program. Shopping carts, you know, we used to have a big problem with shopping carts in the city. They're all over. And I think, uh, the mayor and I got together on a program way back when and put in a shopping cart restraint program that basically said the carts have to stay in the lots. I'm starting to see a little bit of slippage on that now. And the problem before was, first off, you had shopping carts laying in a lot, getting dusty and dirty and abandoned and looking unsightly. And then you also had a lot of them being used to haul recyclables around and, um, and, um, you know, and then getting crusty on the inside. Then when we all went to use them, you know, they had wobbly wheels, that they were really dirty. And there was a noticeable difference after we put that program in place, that the shopping carts are much cleaner. So, not to be too long-winded on this, I'm starting to see more shopping carts that are around, and it's not just the typical retailers that hadn't done a great job of it. It's, it's some of the other retailers, and I don't know how they're managing to get around the system, but all I'm asking is if it code would double up on their efforts to go and talk to the retailers and say, "Hey, you're supposed to keep these carts in the lot," and see what we can do to, to make sure we get this problem corrected again.
Based on your concern, Councilmember Betts, we sent out letters to all the stores and referenced that specifically in reference to the, uh, the locking devices and maintaining carts on their properties. So, hopefully you'll start to see a change.
Great. Thanks. And, um, Ocatillo Mesquite had another accident. We've had a lot of people complaining about that intersection not being a four-way intersection. And I know the engineering has to do a, um, study on that, but I don't know if the, the social media count was correct, that there's been 10 accidents in a year, but, uh, you know, there's certainly been a lot. I saw another one there. I drove past it. It's, it's really an intersection. We have to be very, very careful. If I could ask that we would get some kind of a study done on Ocatillo Mesquite, uh, to see if there's something we can do to turn that into a four-way stop and also add to the list, Ocatillo and Desert View. Um, they're just, those are the ones when I'm driving, I know I have to be extra careful. I've given up on Ocatillo and Hacienda. I don't think we'll ever get that one. So, anybody to agree to that one. But if we could look at those other two, that'd be great.
Danny, can you address those intersections real quick? Because, uh, we know that, uh, as you mentioned before, Councilmember Betts, there has to be warrants for us to be able to put a stop sign there. We arbitrarily put a stop sign there, and there's an accident, then we're held liable. So, there has to be warrants for that specifically. Danny, can you address those other items?
Yeah, we actually did, um, in the last past, uh, I believe the whole year, about nine months ago, we, we hired everybody in a consultant, um, and they are actually completing various sites from various, uh, areas of concern, including stop sign requests, traffic signal requests, and, uh, speed hunt requests. We, I believe, Ocatillo was one of them. I will find out exactly which, which intersections were the ones that they initially, uh, did the actual study or have completed the study and see if we can add these intersections. But yeah, we do complete the engineering study. The engineering study has to be completed in order to install any stop sign, traffics in or speed hunt. And we are in the process of doing those. I'll look into these more specifically as well.
Great. And that's great benefit for the public to know that we, as a city council, just can't say, "Go put a stop sign there." This has to be done for good reason, and has to be a study done, and... And because it could cause an accident the other way, and then the city's liable and all those other reasons. And then another thing for the public is know that when you bring these things to our attention, it prompts engineering to take a look at it and to go do a study and see if there's something that could be done. But it starts with you pointing it out in the first place. I was reading a news, I'm almost done here, Mr. Mayor, I was reading a news story about in a city where somebody had been committed four relatively serious crimes in a day. And each time they got a citation, a site and release, a ticket. And we're talking about car theft or car theft containing stolen property or whatever it was, you know, relatively serious crimes. And not related to the rioting, by the way. And each time they were getting a site and release ticket. So, you know, the question came up, and some conversation came up, is, well, what are we doing? And, you know, the concern is, the reason what's happening was the story here is that, well, the jails are busy and that we're, you know, they're not accepting anybody. And, or, you know, so anyhow, I just, I got curious, I wanted to find out what the situation was. So I went and actually took a tour of Indio Jail. I actually got booked into Indio Jail, I wanted to see what that was like. Not a fun experience. I didn't do anything wrong, I volunteered for that. But it's interesting, it's about, you're looking at about 20 minutes to a half an hour of our officers being tied up down there, and you got the drive time as well. And then they have an extra procedure for the COVID screening. And then basically, I saw the place where the officers would say, here's the last place that, you know, they hand off, they get their equipment back, their handcuffs, whatever else, and then away they go. And I understand that there's, they're not holding them forever. Some, if they're on a nonviolent crime, will stay in their street clothes and get processed into the jail. And about two or three hours, maybe three or four hours later, they're out. And then the ones that are more serious crimes will get put into their jail uniforms, which happen to be color-coded according to how serious they are. And then they'll go into the facility. I walked through the facility, it's empty. And they're ready away, willing to take anybody. I mean, there's just, it's a huge new facility with lots of capacity that's not being utilized. I don't know how we get this, how we work on this, but I don't know what we're doing in our city, if we're just citing and releasing. But my idea is that if we got these people off the streets who are stealing cars, we catch them, that we, at least if they gotta take a ride down to the jail in handcuffs and they gotta go processed and they have to figure out how to get themselves home, and we got them off the street for six or eight hours, that's way better than just issuing a ticket. So I don't know what's going on with other cities that you see site and release. And I don't need any big discussion here, I'm just raising it as a concern that, you know, I don't know where this would come into the process of the council having a look at it and providing some policy or direction. But my preference would be if somebody's stealing a car or even stealing some statuary from somebody's home, that ain't just a ticket and they go do it again. It's, they get sent down to jail, where we got a big new jail. And it's really interesting to see the tour. I think with the Public Safety Committee at C-VAG, we're gonna probably get a more formal tour. And if anybody wanted to go have a look at it, let me know. I mean, I'm sure somebody else can arrange it, but I'm working on another tour, so. But anyhow, that was my thought on that one.
Can we have the chief respond to that real quick?
Councilman, if you look up Judicial Council Executive Four, that's a no bail for all misdemeanors and nonviolent felonies. That is why they're being cited and not housed. That was a judicial order that came out during COVID.
We can't haul them to jail?
The jail won't hold them.
The jail won't, I know they won't hold them, but they will, they will admit them, process them, hold them for three to five hours, and then release them. And they'll stay in their street clothes the whole time they're there. So that's the only point is, I wanted to see if we could take a look at that. We got a lot of car thefts going on, as every city does, it's not just our city.
I would just encourage you to look up Judicial Council Executive Four, because that explains a lot of the reason that we're having these problems.
Okay, chief, don't you have to determine at that point whether it's worth the transportation of an hour of an officer off the street for them just to release them there versus release them here? And also, don't you, don't you also have, if you've come onto a multiple violator, that's automatic booking? You're not gonna keep, just release them here, correct?
Correct, that's what we have the sergeants for, for discretion. We have three officers and a sergeant out usually. We have a lot of extra patrol requests and stuff. So the watch commander will make that decision whether to take that hour and a half to two hours and go down to two, one, two or one officers. If we have an individual that has constantly caused a problem or we believe will continue to cause a problem, we have the authority from the sheriff that they will take them, they will book them, and they will release them later. So we're not bound by anything, it's just a choice that the watch commander makes and how busy it is.
All right, and so I guess the point in bringing up the conversation is maybe there's something where the council can step in here. Because I understand, you know, the cost and expense of sending an officer away. And you've always got control, command issues you have to make and decisions you have to make. But maybe there's another way to provide some type of transportation down there via the city council budgeting something and providing something that says, "We don't have to take our officers off the street, we can get them down there another way." And so I just, I'm just raising it as an issue to take a look at. I'm just not comfortable with somebody stealing something and then, you know, they just get a ticket and can do it four times a day. And the extreme example was like what happened up in the other city that I read the article on. So I'll move on. The, just had my meetings that I attended, attended Airport Land Use Commission on the 14th, Sunline on the 27th. Just quickly on Sunline, the buses are running through all of this time. People keep asking, are the buses running? They're always running. The only time they're not gonna run is if there's some issue of safety regarding passengers or the driver or, you know, threat of vandalism to the equipment. But they will keep running throughout the day. And then attended SCAG, Community Economic Development, and and also have a regional council meeting coming up this week. Mr. Mayor, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like everyone else, end of the month, it was relatively slow. I did have a Coachella Valley Economic Partnership meeting. The nice thing about this is, and as most of you know, I don't really talk a whole lot, I really don't talk much at those meetings. But I got to this time. Most of the meeting was spent talking, what I like to say, a lot of gloom and doom about the current economic circumstances, how many businesses are closed, the unemployment rate. We all know that things are very, very tough for a lot of people. I was able to end that meeting with a little bit of good news, which was about our R and D facility, Emerald, something. I don't even remember it now, but that's coming into the new Kmart. As I mentioned at that meeting, I expected, I think we all expected the Kmart to be closed for quite some time, similar to the old Palm Springs Mall, which was empty for a long time. And I think we're real fortunate that we are able to have this company come in here, not just to occupy that, but also to dedicate themselves to moving their headquarters here from San Diego. And I want to congratulate our city because we did this all on our own. This was our own city that did this without the assistance of anybody. And amidst this storm and cloudiness of economic gloom here, we had a little ray of sunshine. And it was really nice to be able to bring that to the C-VET meeting and end it on a high note. Also attended the general plan zoning meeting we had last week. I hope everybody was able to at least view that. If you have not yet, please go on and view it. There was a lot of information, very excited about how we are kind of getting more cohesive in our zoning and the opportunities we have ahead of us. Those were my meetings. That's probably all I'm gonna say. I can't talk about what's going on right now for personal reasons. It is very close to home. And it is very upsetting to me what I see around the country. I would hope that people can try to not dwell so much on all the horrible aspects. I do understand the anger. What I'm trying to do is focus on the scenes you see of people coming together for a cause. And I hope that we will all continue to do that. I'm done.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight. I'll try to be brief. Again, as Dory Wilm's talked about with our update on COVID recently is, we'll be doing another video here soon, just talking about, we want to make it very clear that in-person church services are now allowed, but there are provisions to that. So please, there's some churches out there, such as Word of Life, that has announced recently on how they're going to handle their church services and have a great, I listened to it yesterday on Facebook and it had a great protocol on how they're gonna do it. So you can reach out locally to some of the pastors here if your church is looking at some of the protocols on in-church services and follow those, please follow the guidelines by state and recommended guidelines. Mask ordinance is still in effect in Desert Hot Springs, so please remember to wear your mask when you're out about. This is less than an hour sometimes if you're just going to essential shopping or whatever you're doing. But put on a mask and be safe for everybody out there right now. It's very important that we continue to keep the curve lowered on this. Get tested, as the chief talked about earlier, the testing site is still in Desert Hot Springs, doing very well. And we want to make sure that you can, you get out and get tested if you feel the need to. You can get tested multiple times, but this helps lower that curve and make sure that we can get to phase four as quick as possible. I know we keep talking about getting to phase three, so we can get the rest of our businesses open. But we want to get to phase four, which is just back to normal life as much as possible. We want to talk about Desert Hot Springs High School today. I was very proud of working with Palm Springs Unified School District on, we didn't do a whole bunch here in the city, but we did have a couple of meetings with them to talk about some of the issues that the high school seniors are facing, which is an unprecedented graduation that no one else will ever face, most likely in our lifetime, where they can't have a normal graduation. But the Palm Springs Unified School District principal here, Principal Coda at Desert Hot Springs High School stepped up. She recommended that they have a drive-through ceremony. Over the last four days, they've been doing a drive-through ceremonies for their seniors, which is able to have their family show up, they're able to walk and get a diploma, take some pictures with the officials and be able to have their family say thank you to them. Yesterday, I was fortunate enough to represent the city at the valedictorian's street naming, which is a tradition that the city of Desert Hot Springs participates in. Abigail Vera is a, as mentioned by Councilmember Pye, who received a scholarship recently. She is a valedictorian this year, and that street, Pearson and Choi, is named after her this year. She'll be attending UCLA, as stated, and wants to be a doctor. Very proud of her, 330 students in this class, and she was a top student. Very humble and sounded like she was very excited to go on to college and come back to Desert Hot Springs someday and maybe give back. But just again, to Desert Hot Springs High School graduates, to our promoting classes from elementary and middle school, we really feel for you and then hope that you get the credit that you deserve this year. Desert Hot Springs has stepped up with multiple social media posts on the high schoolers. We have signings around this community that have gone up, and we'll continue to do that. And thank you to our public safety officers that are out there today, serving our fire department, EMTs, code enforcement, all public safety that has stepped up to really make us safe over the last few days. My family and I were fortunate enough to go on a small three-day vacation outside the city. Came back coming back on Sunday, we were out of the area, not really in an area where we could get the news and heard what's going on in our country. And it was just a shame. You know, it's something that I might not be able to understand what some people feel, but I do understand what the impact is on local communities, on somebody doing something as those officers did to that man was just not right. And so with that, I believe in our police force and what we've trained our police officers to do. And I believe they're going to make us, keep us safe during this time. With that said, I want to thank you, the constituents, for keeping our community safe. There's people out there that are doing things that they shouldn't do just because they're not in their community. If you were on social media, there was a very powerful argument made by a young lady in New York City. I don't know if it was today or yesterday, but there was a bunch of looters that came through her neighborhood. And she lives in a very poor neighborhood and had a lot of needs, and they destroyed that little neighborhood. And she made it very clear on what they were doing to her neighborhood was not right. So there's a lot of powerful messages out there. We have a very diverse community. I believe that our community is very fair to all races. And I believe that we do represent what a small community should do in times of needs like this, by giving back and making sure that we're all safe. I want to end on a really high note today. And I'm going to make a video later, after all this is over. But during COVID, there's been some true unsung heroes in our community. And I'm just gonna name a few today that I've recognized as the mayor of Desert Hot Springs. Donna Lee, who used to be a member of our community and take photos in our community, has probably thousands and thousands of photos. And she posts every day someone that has made a difference in Desert Hot Springs and posts hundreds of photos of how they've made a difference. And that is inspiring. If you're not on Facebook, that is just continues to inspire a lot of us. Food Now volunteers, there is lots of what we call snowbirds, seasonal residents that have come here to help feed the hungry and the homeless in our community. And they continue to do that each and every year, a lot of them have left. And there's groups like Rotary and other groups that are stepping up to fill those voids. But I want to thank them for what they've done in our community. Our senior center staff, I couldn't ask for more for how they've stepped up. Melanie, who's the director over there, they've just stepped up to really feed the seniors, make sure that they're taken care of, making phone calls, keeping them all continued during this time, making sure that they're safe. The Word of Life Church, their essential meals, or their meal program that went out to essential workers. It wasn't just police officers and firefighters and EMTs. They drove up to a grocery store one day and gave some food to the grocery workers because they're essential workers at this time, and it really touched me. The physical education teacher at Desert Hot Springs High School, I know her first name is Brett, I don't know her last name. But the only reason I know this, I have two high schoolers in my, in my house. She gives her own time every day, multiple times a day, to put on exercise programs for the high school students. My oldest daughter, who's 16, doesn't miss a beat. And she decided to drive out to each and every one of their homes last week and drop off a little thank you package to each of them for continuing their exercise programs. This is up and beyond what she has to do as an educator in our community, but she's done this each and every day since COVID started. The Yard Bomber, as we call her, the Yard Bombs from Desert Sun, that's what they named her, Stephanie Brill. She basically puts up yarn art all over our community, but really stepped up to put on some really cool yarn art on the high school to help celebrate the seniors. And a lot of seniors, when I was at the valedictorian's street naming the other day, were taking pictures next to it. And it just was fun to see. And her continuing to put those messages out there, I just want to say thank you. To the Sikh community who came out and gave 3,000 hot meals last month, just amazing. Our Desert Hot Springs Rotary Club that have stepped up and helped provide seniors meals each and every day that can't get out of their homes, have delivered packages, and now have stepped up to help Food Now, when they're in need of volunteers in our community, with their interact club. Palm Springs Unified School District, and there are over 100,000 meals that they've served to the youth in this district. Just thank you. And to our Desert Hot Springs staff, each and every day, you guys come to work, you do your job, and I just can't ask for more. It's gotta be tough being stuck in your house, working a lot. But when those, for those of you that are stuck in your house and coming to work every day for our team, it really shows. And thank you to each and every one of you because you're there each and every time. So I think it's time to really thank these people in our community. And this is just a small list of a long list that will come out towards the end of this in time. But this is just a snapshot of people I wanted to say thank you to today, tonight. That said, I want to move on to our first item, which is our public hearings. Our first item is item number two. The Development Permit Number 20-3, An Application to Develop 15 Single Family Homes Within the Eagle Point Specific Plan Residential Development Track Map Number 30540. And this report will be given by our Community Development Director, Rebecca Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm gonna turn it over for the report and presentation by Patricia Villagomez, our assistant planner. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. The project is for the development of 15 new single-family homes within the Eagle Point Residential Development. The project is located at the northwest corner of Pearson Boulevard and Eagle Way within the residential low district. Here are some of the existing homes within the residential development that feature different architectural and colors. Those elevations have a desert contemporary Mediterranean design and a reverse and staggered architectural along the street frontages. Showed here is a basing plan for the project. The applicant has indicated that there will be a total of six phases with a completion date. The applicant has indicated that there will be a total of six phases with the completion date of the project being on September of twenty twenty one. Here is a landscape plan that will include a combination of trees, shrubs and small axon plants to balance aesthetic and water usage. On September third, two thousand two, the city council approved the Eagle Point Specific Plan and track maps number three zero five three nine and three zero five four zero for the subdivision of two hundred and twenty one lots and associated improvements. On May twentieth, two thousand three, the city council approved an amendment to the specific plan to increase the number of lots from two hundred and twenty one to two hundred and sixty four. On May twelfth, twenty twenty, the planning commission recommended approval to city council for the development of fifteen new single family homes. On September third, two thousand two, the city council approved the original project and in doing so adopted the mitigated native decoration for the project. Pursuant to sequel regulations, once an M and B has been adopted for a project, no subsequent environmental review needs to be completed unless there are substantial changes in the project or additional review. So I recommend that the city council approve development permit number twenty dash three, subject to the proposed conditions of approval and findings to develop fifteen new single family homes within the Eagle Point Specific Plan Track Map Number three zero five four zero. That concludes my presentations and I am available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. I'm going to move on to entertaining questions of staff from council. This is before I open the public hearing. Does anybody have any specific questions they need to ask? I don't see anybody raising their hand or coming on board. I will move to opening the public hearing at this time and it will take testimony from applicants. As we can't tell if they're in favor, opposed, or neutral position, do we have any comments, Gerald, for during this public hearing?
So no one registered for this item, but we do have someone showing up by the name of Sal Kerr. We can allow the person to speak and see if.
So you want to speak on this item?
No, I didn't. I just wanted to be a part of the meeting and the only way to do that was to say that I had a comment.
You got it, Sally. Thank you for coming in.
All right. Hello, everybody.
All right. Any other comments, Gerald, you can see?
Uh, no.
All right. All right. We'll move to. Is the applicant on the line or are they here to make any comments? Rebecca, you don't have them or Patricia?
No, he didn't sort of talk.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing at this time and open up the city council discussion. Do I have any discussion? Yes, Mr. Gardner?
Just just a quick comment before we make a motion on this, but this is exciting to see so many new construction projects and infill in our existing developments going on this summer, considering everything that's been going on with the pandemic and and everything else. I was talking to several colleagues in a few of the other cities and we're still getting quite a few new housing development requests that they're not. And I just think it bodes very well for the city and for our development staff and for our our growth overall as a city. And so I'm excited to support this. So if you're open for a motion, I would move, we we accept staff recommendations and approve the permit.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Betts. And do I have any other comments by council members? I don't need anybody coming into queue. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
I.
Councilmember Py?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths?
I.
And Mayor Metz?
I.
Motion passes you, Ms. Dunn.
Item number three is the Desert Valley Disposal placing delinquent disposal billings on the county tax roll fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty one. Just real quick on the process of this before Jeffrey gives his staff report. If there is anybody on the line to dispute anything, we'll have Chris Cunningham here to speak to that item and we can continue down this path and understand that the 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 delinquent rolls doesn't hit the property taxes until end of August, Jeffrey? September?
Around August, yes.
So we have time to to make some resolution, but I don't think we have anybody on the line. Just wanted to make that very clear. So first start with a staff report. This is financial director, Mr. Buckman.
Yes, thank you. So this is a public hearing to consider Desert Valley disposals request to put ninety five thousand nine hundred twenty two dollars and sixty four cents of delinquent billings on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one tax rolls. The the account holders have been notified, have been sent a letter to notify them of this public hearing. Of the public hearing and that they were, and if there are any property owners that have wish to discuss the dispute or reconcile their accounts, they can contact Desert Valley Disposal tomorrow, June third, and they will investigate or reconcile any outstanding payments. They can call our customer service number seven six zero three two nine zero five three zero. As we said before, you, Chris Cunningham is also here to answer questions and staff recommends adoption of resolution to place the delinquent Desert Valley disposal billings on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one tax roll.
All right. Our next item on there is the entertaining questions of staff. Do we have any specific questions before I open the public hearing? Yes, Miss Py.
On page one one seven, section four, should that and not be, should that be May fifteenth?
Yes, the letter was actually dated May fifteenth. The April fifteenth letter was for the next year assessments.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chris, do you want to provide the phone number to the public and if they wish to dispute and or make an arrangement with Desert Valley Disposal?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and anyone listening, thank you for the time. Yes, there is time to get off the tax rolls if you if you want to do that after the delinquents. Just call our number. You can call seven six zero three two seven one three five one. And just talk to me if anyone's listening, just so I make sure it gets done. Extension three zero three.
Thank you very much, Chris. I'll open the public here at this time. Is there anybody who would like to give testimony in favor, opposed, or neutral position, Gerald?
We have nobody, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close the public here at this time and open up to other questions by city council. Anyone? Right, entertain a motion?
And we approve staff's recommendation with the correction to the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion by Miss Py, second by Mr. Gardner. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
I.
Councilmember Gardner?
I.
Councilmember Py?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths?
I.
And Mayor Metz?
I.
Motion passes you, Ms. Dunn.
Item number four is a resolution ordering annual assessments for Desert Valley Disposal solid waste refuge services and residential properties for fiscal year twenty 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 one. And again, our financial director, Mr. Buckheim, will give the report.
Yes, so this is a public hearing to place the solid waste billings for residential properties on the county tax roll on behalf of Desert Valley Disposal for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one fiscal year. On April twenty first, the council adopted a resolution of intention to levy assessments and collect for assessment for the solid waste services. And this amputating them on the tax roll is actually part of the franchise agreement the city has with Desert Valley Disposal. The fiscal year twenty twenty one solid waste services for residential properties represent seven thousand three hundred seventy accounts totaling two million five hundred nineteen, five hundred nineteen thousand two hundred eighty dollars and twenty five cents. The staff recommends the adoption of a resolution ordering the annual annual assessment.
All right, we're entertaining questions of staff from the council. Any questions? I see none. I'll open the public here at this time. We'll take testimony in favor, opposed, and neutral position. Is there any any public comments on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Close public here at this time and we'll go to city council discussion. Anyone? Miss Py?
I went through this yesterday, but I can't remember. Is this the one we should not be having a public hearing in the resolution, Jeffrey?
This is, we are having a public hearing. This is, you know, this is a public hearing toward the ones that we have later on items. Six, seven, and eight, actually, we are supposed to be having public hearings for those and they're scheduled in July.
I'm done.
Anyone else? Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments, maybe a quick question to Mr. Cunningham. The looking over the 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 fees and the the increased slight increase this year, I think is is in line and I really appreciate that. And I I know how hard you guys work to 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 do the job that you do here for us in the city. I do have concerns and I'm not sure if there's any way to really even address them, but with the cost for recycled tippage going up, yet a lot of that recycle is not being recycled because of their lack of a market for recyclable materials these days. And I I know we have various state and federal requirements for recycling and things like that, but I it it, do you see a long term rebound of that market? Or are we going to continue to pay more for recycling stuff that doesn't get recycled? And should we perhaps work with the legislature to address the requirements for mandatory recycling and rebuy some of that until a market does come around?
Yes, council member. Absolutely. I think that last point you made about discussing with officials and legislators is a great idea. I think you're going to see more and more of that from our local elected officials. I think the push needs to come from cities, especially with thirteen eighty three coming. Recycling, there is no easy answer there nor short term solution. I don't think the foreign markets are going to recover enough. I know that China will and the Asian markets are are basically going to stop accepting the stuff. So we're going to have to rely on local markets and that's the problem right now. There just isn't enough infrastructure. And really, there's no manufacturing of a lot of these products that are being made. I know that there is some legislation about producer responsibility, extended producer responsibility, creating packaging for products that are actually more recyclable, your ones and your twos. But the short term, there there just isn't a solution to that, but I I think you're absolutely right. I I think that there has to be a push to legislators and to Cal recycle because obviously we can't find a place to market this stuff or most of it.
You know, and and that's a shame. I mean, the all of the years I lived, the twenty eight years I lived in Seattle, all dating all the way back to the late eighties, we were recycling up there and was very successful at reducing the amount of space we used in landfill and the amount of trash that was diverted away from the landfill. And that's the whole design, the whole, the whole idea behind all of this. And unfortunately, we're not doing that these days, yet we're still paying for it. So that might be something for us as a council to consider is is working with the League of California Cities and others to try to persuade legislators to give us an alternative to that, just just to reduce the cost for our for our residents. We want to encourage recycling. We'd love to see more recycling, but if there's not a market for it and it costing us more to just haul it away and still dump it, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. So thank you for that. And also, Chris, I just wanted to say too, I am, I know my neighbors and a lot of residents in the city are very appreciative of the great job that you guys do here for us in the city, the big yellow truck driving around, picking up trash. I know that whenever I call you guys and send in an email and say that there's something that needs to be picked up, it's picked up within twenty four hours at the most. You guys are out there on the job, day in, day out. I see that truck every day as I'm out walking with my dog. And and I'm probably telling you in more places because I'm out there walking with the dog all the time and seeing what what people dump. It's unfortunate. We have so many residents that insist on just tossing their trash out and and not doing what they need to do with it, but I just wanted to give you kudos and props and you and your staff for the hard work that you do and the great job you do in keeping the city clean. And I really do appreciate that. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? All right, there's a, there's a motion on the table. Do we have a motion, a second?
I vote we accept the staff report.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Betts?
I.
Councilmember Gardner?
I.
Councilmember Py?
I.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths?
I.
And Mayor Metz?
I.
Motion passes you, Ms. Dunn.
Move to our administrative calendar. Item number five, City of Desert Hot Springs, preliminary one year budget for all funds and capital improvement projects for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Financial Director, Mr. Buckman?
Yes, thank you. So I have a presentation for you for the the twenty twenty one preliminary draft budget. Gerald, if you can bring that up, please. Okay, so here's the presentation. Our our next slide is the is our discussion points. We'll be going over the consolidated general fund, which contains the general fund, health and wellness fund, public safety fund, also discussing the consolidated general fund balance and then overview of the other funds, fiduciary funds, special revenue funds, and capital project funds. Our next slide shows revenues and expenditures for the general fund. The general fund is responsible for administration, community development, economic developments, public works, nondepartmental, other parts. We are expecting seventeen million two hundred sixty six thousand one hundred fifty five dollars in revenue and nine million five hundred nine thousand one hundred twenty three dollars in expenditure. Our next slide is just, it shows the percentages of the general fund revenues and for next fiscal year, we're showing our cannabis taxes growing up to twenty seven percent of the general fund revenues. The next slide shows as a bar graph of the general fund expenditures. And you can see that the largest amount is for general fund is nondepartmental and that is mostly comprised of transfers out to other funds, like Health and Wellness Fund, the landscape, the citywide landscape and lighting maintenance district fund. Next slide, we talk about the Health and Wellness Fund. This this fund is responsible for the Aquatic Center, Desert Hot Springs operation, the Health Center, Community Health and Wellness Center. We have four hundred seventy nine thousand nine hundred twenty dozen dollars in revenues and four hundred so four hundred seventy nine thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars in expenditures. On the next slide will show breakout those revenues and expenditures. Major revenues are the most is probably is a transfer from the general fund in the amount of four hundred thirty nine thousand. And then we get a reimbursement for shared costs with your items like utilities in an amount of thirty thousand. The major expenditures of that fund is for the Aquatic Center at over two hundred ninety six thousand and the Community Health and Wellness Center at over ninety five thousand. The next slide shows our Public Safety Fund. This can, the program supported here are patrol and field operations, code compliance, animal control, graffiti abatement and fire services. We are expecting six million sixty eight thousand seven hundred dollars in revenues and thirteen million seven hundred twenty five thousand eighty six dollars in expenditures. Our next slide shows is a breakout of the major revenues and expenditures. The rate of revenues for the public safety fund, there's you know, the the largest of over, you know, half the expenditures is a transfer from the general fund in the amount of over seven point six million dollars. There's also two point seven million coming from these public safety parcel tax and another two million dollars coming from the utility user tax. These items are just for public safety use. Major expenditures are the police and patrol of field operations at nine point eight million and fire services at two point three million. Our following slide shows we discussed the general fund, consolidated general fund balance. We are estimating, so at the end of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, you can see we had a consolidated general fund balance of eleven point two million with our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty revenues and expenditures. Expecting the balance, ending fund balance at the at six thirty twenty twenty to be ten point eight, ten point eight million. This includes the use of four hundred eighty two thousand dollars for a reserve, a fund balance, the capital, the future capital purchases for purchases of heavy equipment. With the, and then at the, at the end of, you know, this fiscal year, six thirty twenty twenty, we're estimating two point four million dollars to be in the marijuana reserves. So we're expecting about one point one million to be a little less than one point one million to be transferred at the end of this fiscal year to the marijuana reserve. With the proposed revenues of twenty eight, twenty three million eight hundred eight thousand and proposed expenditures of twenty four million one hundred fifty four thousand, we are surplus, expecting a surplus of three hundred forty we are surplus, expecting a surplus of $345,000, I'm sorry, deficit of $345,275, which would be giving an estimated ending fund balance at June 30th, 2021, over, a little over $10.5 million. This shows like just a little over $1 million to be transferred to marijuana reserve, making that balance at $3.4 million. We are requesting the use of $345,000 from the natural, natural and fiscal emergency reserve in the fund balance. For this fiscal year, we, for during the 2021 fiscal year, there we are estimating a loss of revenues of over $1 million. And in order to help balance that, the staff actually reduced expenses by almost $900,000. There we go. We're estimating transfer $1,011,000 to the marijuana reserve. And this, this, this budget accounts for 97.5 FTE positions, seven of which are vacant and frozen for this fiscal year. On our next slide, we are discussing the other funds. We have fiduciary funds, and those are funds that are used to account for resources held for the benefit of other parties outside the government agency. We have about nine fiduciary funds. They include the Desert Hot Springs Successor Agency, which is the former redevelopment agency, the Community Facility District for the Skyborne Agency Bond Fund, and then several community facility districts throughout the city. These funds cover debt service payments, property maintenance, and administrative costs for the, for the agency, and they are budgeted for at a total of $5,059,723. On our next, our next slide, we discuss the special revenue funds and uses. Special revenue funds are used to account for funds that are restricted to pay only those costs associated with the activity allowable under either state, federal, or other legal guidelines, which are established for those funds. We have the, city has the following special revenue categories. We have lighting and landscaping districts and drainage assessment districts fund. We actually have one citywide fund, and then the remaining four are formed by developers at below. We have, for other special revenues are grant and other agency funds. These account for funds coming from other agencies and expenditures, including road rehab, street and street lighting maintenance, and emergency supplies, funding, they come from funding services from grants where we are required to restrict these funds in a separate accounting. There are development impact fees, and these funds are used to fund capital projects that become necessary as part of new development. And we have law enforcement special revenue funds, which are funding that offsets frontline police department services and vehicle abatement. And then on our next slide, we talk about the capital, capital project funds and uses. These are capital, the capital project funds are created to account for financial resources for the acquisition and construction of major capital facilities. We have two funds in this budget cycle, the Capital Improvement Fund and the 2012 Street Trip Bond Fund. These funds are used for the capital improvement projects in the, in the CIP plan and, and for the debt service on the trip bonds. And right now, this, for this budget, they're budgeted at $3,724,187. So the next slide, it's just any questions or discussion?
Take care of that report. At this time, we'll entertain questions from council. Start with Mr. Gardner.
Oh, okay. I, I've gone through all this over the weekend, and I appreciate your slides, Jeffrey, and then your great explanation board. I, I think a one-year budget is a very, very wise move on our part, given the uncertainties of everything that's going on right now. I do, you know, budget forecasting is, is never been an exact science. It's kind of like throwing a dartboard, and nowadays, we're, we're, we're just kind of waving our arms and hoping. So we just, nobody knows what anything's going to be in the next couple of years. I, I'm a little bit concerned about the TOT revenue coming in at what you have it projected, but I think we can go with that. I, I, the fact that we have triggers, if revenue doesn't come in as expected, that will trigger some cuts, I think is a great way to handle this. And I'm really glad that we're not having to make the drastic cuts like other cities are faced. You know, Desert Hot Springs has always kind of been the, the poor stepchild of the valley, and it's, it's fantastic for us to sit here on the fiscal position that we're sitting in right now and not have the issues to deal with that, that our other cities are dealing with. I do think we're going to be walking on, on eggshells through the, through the rest of the year, but I, looking at this budget, we're providing the needed services and avoiding deep cuts at this point. And I don't think, and fingers crossed, that we're, we're going to have to be there. I do see a couple of options for maybe saving some additional dollars if, if we need to in there. For instance, our annual contribution to CEBEP, the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership, I don't think that that gets us anything, and then, and I think it's something we can, we can save our expenditures on in that case. And whether we chose to do it now, or whether that falls under a trigger, if revenue doesn't come in, I'm not sure. But I'll just leave it at that. But I think staff's done a great job on this budget in trying times. And again, I'm happy to, to say that we're not going to have to make the deep cuts. I, I really do feel for my colleagues in Palm Springs and La Quinta and elsewhere that are really struggling with, with having to do deep cuts and faced with tremendous increases in their police costs that are being passed on by the county. And we're not, we're very lucky in this city, based on the previous council's actions. And I, I think, I think we have a good start for a budget here, and I'm happy to support this as it is.
Mr. Betts? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd been asking for, have a little bit more robust look at the budget, starting, you know, a few months back. And I'm noticing in this budget that we, we don't have a summary of year-over-year operating revenue that shows what we're doing this year compared to prior years. Typically, that would look like a document that has, you know, actual for 2017, 2018, and then what was budgeted, and then what was, became the actual in the following year, working up to how we finished out the existing year, and then where we're going into the future. And it's a perspective that I can't figure out how we can take a look at what's going on now if we don't have that look at the other prior years. It's, that's how you gauge what's going on in the future is, okay, what's been our historical spending in the past? We don't have that. I would really, I've asked for that today. I'm understanding I'll be getting it, but I would have liked to have had that much sooner than now. I thought it should have been in this budget, budget presentation. And I also don't see in this process where there's been the interaction of council members or the public or anybody to have an opportunity to say, I would like to promote this spending plan as opposed to just accepting what we've been presented. We didn't have that back and forth. I would like to hear what ideas my council members have for things they would like to see. Can we find the revenue for it? And that type of robust discussion that would guide, that the council would guide our direction. You know, for example, we might want to budget for a program to knock down car thefts and petty theft and provide some money to the police for that. Or we may decide that, anyhow, there's a whole number of things. I mean, there's, there's a normal budget process that we go through with the give and take. Hey, what do you think about that? And the answer may be, you know, it's a great idea, we want to have money for it. Or the council may wrap around their head around it and say, yeah, that is a good idea. Let's go with that. Now we got to figure out where we're going to get the money. Can we trim it out of this project and put it into that one? And in good economic times or bad, that's the normal budget process. And I was a little disappointed we haven't followed that. And then there's, finally, there's a process to review and understand the numbers. And so we got this on Thursday, and we're going through it. And I appreciate this staff time today to where I could get my questions. It was the first opportunity since getting this on Thursday to ask the questions. And I'm getting some of those, I noticed, that come in by email just ahead of the meeting. I haven't had a chance to review those yet. But for me, there's always a process where you get your head around the numbers, look at them, and that's a step that takes some discussion, I thought would have been better in a study session, and then go from there. So and then, you know, finally, there, so, so what are the financial assumptions on income? We might ask, you know, it would be an opportunity where we would ask, all right, so you're assuming that TOT is going to decrease by only 13%? And then in our job of oversight and review, hold on a second, dang it, I turned that off. All right, in our, in our job of oversight and review, we would, we would question that and say, how are you coming up with 13%? Some of us might think it's 50%. We don't know. But we would examine those assumptions of staff. See, our job here is twofold. It's one is to weigh the reasonableness of revenue projections and what being presented. And I think that would be very important during this time with the uncertainty that's going on. And then to have a look at our spending priorities and how we're setting them, and we haven't done that. You know, will, will sales tax from a post-COVID economy drop by 14%? Will development-related fees only drop by 8%? I don't know. I haven't seen any assumptions that went into that study. I can come up with my numbers, but those aren't a collective wisdom of the council working with staff. So those are a few of the things I see as problematic. But the first step is to get our head around the, the numbers, the orientation of what staff's presenting. And so I'm going to get into a couple of those questions now and go through this and see if we can get some, you know, had this conversation with staff earlier, but I think for the benefit of the public, it's good that they have it as well. The first thing is, is the consolidated general fund balance and some reserve balance. The first question is, what are our reserves? That's my first question. I'm going to try to get a snapshot of everything. So what are our reserves that we're looking at? And so I think the number that we came up with, I gotta look at my notes, was 3.4, no, 6.4 million. Ask for the answer question, Mr. Betts? Well, I'm just, my understanding is the reserve that we'll end up with is 6.4 after we take out 400,000 from reserves to make it through this year. And maybe Jeffrey can just confirm I got that right number.
Yes, so we're expecting at the end of this fiscal year, 6.9 million in reserves, which is a part of the total fund balance. And then for the next fiscal year, we're requesting use 345,000 of that. So by the end of next fiscal year, 630, 2021, we'll be down to 6.5, 6.5, 6.6 million in reserves.
Okay, and I think what's critical about that is that, you know, there's been talk that we had 11 million in reserves, we had 10 million in reserves, and the real number is, we just hear now and can document in a meeting, is 6.4. The, and of that 6.4, there's what, 2.4, and it anticipated to be in the Cannabis Reserve Fund? Is that correct?
At the end of this fiscal year, yes. We, we were anticipating having $2.4 million in the Cannabis Reserve.
Okay. And then I think one of the things that's important to look at is a schedule of authorized position. That's normal in the budget process. That's where we get something presented to us. We look at it, and we say, do we agree with these positions, this staffing? I mean, all this goes along. I remember a late council member, Greg Pettis, who served for, you know, decades, saying that the first job of a council, or 70% of the council, is doing budgeting and understanding his numbers, and not disagreeing with staff, but providing that review, and then seeing if maybe the council has a different idea for some of this stuff. So, you know, as we go through and look at these numbers, we need to understand, okay, where are we going with authorized positions that the council authorizes? Not to belabor this, but Cathedral City Council had an initiative they wanted to go through, and they wanted the staff to take on. And once the staff got into working it, they realized to meet the council objectives, they needed two more employees. So they go back to the council, and they say, hi, we would like to add two more employees and add those to the schedule of authorized positions. So that would became the routine, and I didn't see that in here. Just on a minor note, we're showing receipts from the swimming pool at 10 million on the staff report. And on page 11 of 58, I just noticed it's at 7, not 10 million, at 10,000. And then on page 11 of 58, under aquatic fees, it's showing 7,000. Was there any change to how we're planning to charge fees for that pool?
No, there weren't any changes for that.
Okay, so you might want to check that and see which one of those two, if we collected 10,000 or 7,000, I wasn't sure. I did have a question come in from the residents that I thought I'd ask since this budget time. Are we keeping the pool open? I know we have COVID concerns, but is the plan of staff that we are going to fund swimming pool as soon as it opens? What's taken care of in the budget here?
Yes, it's included.
Okay, so the person who just emailed me, you heard that, I hope you're listening. And I'll get back to you. The pool will be open. Purchasing heavy equipment, is that the equipment that we authorized for AQMD purchases purposes?
Yes, it was the one authorized back in November. So there's the, the bucket and the...
And that's something that we absolutely positively have to do. It's a lot of money.
It's something we already did, and it's to replace old equipment, especially ones that were no longer, would no longer be, you know, I think Danny would have an explanation.
Yeah, it was a front loader, the small loader, and the water truck, and they weren't going to meet any of the AQMD requirements. So the city was either going to get fined by a monthly fee, or we were going to have to completely get rid of them. So we would, we would have been left with no equipment at all. We do have it now. It's been purchased, and we do have them on site now.
All right, so we got those replaced, and that's just reflected in this next year's budget, right?
No, it's in, it's in this year's budget, and I'm showing you as a reminder, saying, hey, we're using, we were using the future, the reserves set aside for future capital purchases as that during the 1920, but 1920 fiscal year.
Okay, well, it, it doesn't sound like we can revisit that purchase. AQMD will be after us, I'm sure. We're showing contract services across a whole bunch of the, the departments that range anywhere from 20,000 to 400,000. And I know you can't get into that here. We don't have the time. Again, that's where I was hoping that we would have some sort of study session, a chance to come back, look at this stuff a couple of times, and go through it. But I'd like to know what the contract services are for. For example, we can pick out one, city council contract services of $236,000. Can we, what is, what's in, what's in, like, what contract services is the city council doing for 236,000?
A part of that includes the Desert Valley Disposal Trash Abatement Program.
Okay, so we have, what's that, about 180,000 of the 236?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and, you know, not wanting to get down to the weeds, but that wouldn't be something that I would think...
You're already there, Mr. Betts. You're in the weeds.
Well, that's what we're supposed to do in the council. Try and keep it short.
I think a lot of us disagree with you, but please try to move this along. We got other council members have comments too. I know you've already had these questions answered.
Okay, well, this is, you know, this is what we do. I'm almost done. So the, I wouldn't agree that the, you know, a program, operating program would get dumped off and budgeted into the council, but that would be some discussion we'd have. The PERS payments, big subject. Where are we at on those? I don't see any projection for future years in this budgeting. Do we need to be setting something more aside than what we are in this budget?
Right now, we are, we are covering these PERS projections for the new, for the... Right now, we don't really have much to set aside. We're covering what the new PERS cost will be for the new PERS rates for next fiscal year, as well as the payment into the side fund. That is something we have, we are still have in mind when PERS starts doing the ramp up to increase the, to increase the contribution rates to wrap up, to pay off the unfunded liability. However, that will not start until the 2022, 23 fiscal year, so for another two years.
Okay, so we are setting some aside in some departments? We are booking that?
We are not setting anything aside in departments just yet. We, right, at this point, we don't have the funding for.
Okay, all right, so that's showing up in that, all the department expend... documentation, but it's not showing, we're not have the money for it. You know, Palm Springs is getting through by using the rest of their reserves and their PERS reserves that they had set aside, a fund they had set aside to fund PERS. They're probably now in the same position we are, is with unfunded PERS liabilities, and we need to take a look at that. We should have probably had that as a budget discussion. So our revenue projection for this year is twenty-three million, eight hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how does that compare to how much we took in last year?
So that is, that is actually a slight increase from last year, and that's based on, we have, you know, increased revenue from the public safety parcel tax. There is some increased revenue in the, and increased revenue in the cannabis taxes.
Okay. And, and those are all based on assumptions of the cannabis continuing to expand and grow and provide more money, right?
Yes.
How much is it growing from this year over last year?
That I do not know off the top of my head. I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay, so I'm, and I'm not trying to pick staff apart. It's just that this is a normal budget process that I go through to where I understand. Okay, how does this compare to a prior year? So for example, if we're projecting that marijuana tax is going to go up, it'd be nice to know how much it's going to go up. And then the second step of that would be, well, you know, me looking around the industry and seeing what I see. And then you're projecting this number. Do I think that's reasonable or not?
You muted yourself, Mr. Betts.
All of this is just to make sure we don't get into the kind of budget trouble that we got in before. And I like to take a much more early, I like to take an early look and I like to get into way more than we have in this budget process. Now, I've got, Mr. Mayor, I got more on some of the other items like the the contract management report and the, what is it, the the public improvements schedule. But I can wait if you want. You want to give somebody else in the queue a chance to talk?
No, I'd like you to get through all your questions. I, I do not like the process that you take, but that's your affordability. You like this process. So I, I thank you for clarifying that this is a normal process that you would take. I don't think it's a normal process that council would take, but I want to afford you the time that you have, and I don't want to cut you off. So please try to get through your questions.
Okay. We've got some items here. I don't know what this report's called. It's the big spreadsheet on doesn't have a title to capital improvements plan, project plan. Okay, there we go. Are we putting in more speed humps?
Sorry, Danny, do you have an answer to that? I don't think that's part of the capital improvement project plan.
We, we don't have any speed humps on the current capital improvement plan. We are doing those studies. Based on the studies, we will go back and look at how we're going to get funding to either implement speed home, stop signs and so forth. We currently do not have it.
All right, so it's on here, but it's not, this is part of nineteen twenty, but it's not looking at a future look, correct? So everything on, is there anything on this, to short circuit this a little bit, is there anything on here that's requiring some decision of this council to say, we're going to fund this now?
The entire capital, the capital improvement plan is there for nineteen twenty and for twenty twenty-one as well. And we, we, we did push as many projects, if they were not had any time requirement for grant funding to be expended this fiscal year, they pushed it as far back as we can, which included fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and you'll see them spread out by, by columns on each of the, of each corresponding project.
Got it. Okay, so, you know, Palm Springs to make it through their terrible, horrible situation financially, have had to put a few projects on hold. And so what becomes relevant here is we're digging, digging into reserves for four hundred and fifty thousand on what might be some optimistic projections regarding that we're not going to drop as much in some areas. And so I'm then you're looking at this, is there any capital improvement projects that require spending that as much as we wouldn't want to, we could drop out of the mix? Is, is all the funding for city hall done in phase two?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why zero is showing there. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I may have some other questions that go through my notes, but rather than taking time to dig through my notes to see what I'm missing, I'll, I'll take a break here and listen to the council members. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll, to let you know, the, the increase in cannabis tax revenues from last year to the, or from the current year to the next fiscal year, it's a nine point six percent increase.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
City manager had his hand up. He wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And although I know that council member Betts understands the difference between fund balance and reserves, the public probably does not. And so Jeffrey, can you explain to them that that's unencumbered money, but there's some restrictions attached to that ten point seven million dollars? Do you explain what is in fund balance so we can get that out there?
Yes, so we actually, the city does, or at the end of last fiscal year, the city had eleven point two million dollars in fund balance. Part of, you know, fund balance is basically the equity of the, the general, the fund. Of that, there are, of that fund balance are reserves. Reserves are what the, what is set aside based on either, you know, council action or other actions imposed upon the city. We have set aside two point seven million, I'm sorry, three point seven million dollars in, you know, natural and fiscal emergency reserve. We've set aside eight hundred thousand dollars for, you know, the expenditures for a few future capital uses. And then there's, you know, what currently is one point three million dollars in the marijuana reserve. So the remainder of that is unencumbered and available for anything unassigned, available for operation, which is two point seven million dollars. So leaving, giving us a fund, actual fund balance of eleven point two million dollars. Anything set aside in reserves are based on what actually it's from council, and we cannot use them unless they are given, unless it is authorized by city council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Ms. Pye, you're up next.
I just wanted to explain, I, I, I got your point, Mr. Betts, but for me, I got the information. I asked the question, I was able to answer, answer, ask the question of Jeffrey. And I got all the information. I did, as, as you stated, ask for comparison from last year to this year. And I knew we couldn't do it right now, but as you said, we will get it. One of the things is municipal finances are very difficult, in my opinion, are very difficult. And as I said to Jeffrey yesterday, this is the best budget in figuring out what it's about that I've seen in a long time. And I appreciate that. And with some differences, I wanted to know, and you were able to give me questions. So I'm just saying, we take a different look at it or a different approach. And I'm okay with the approach I took. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Griffith?
I wanted to say, so this is just, I have a question. This is just preliminary budget, correct? This is kind of the starting point to get us where, what we're saying. This is where we're projecting for the next year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, which means that we at some point or periodically throughout the year, and I think especially this coming fiscal year with everything that's gone on, the uncertainty, we will be taking a look at this for possible adjustments. Is that correct?
Because we don't know what the future holds in this. We feel that this is a living document this year. We just don't know how COVID is going to continue to affect budgets.
Right, so that means that we will be taking a look later on if we need to make adjustments.
That's correct.
Okay, we do every year.
Yeah, okay, so I, I kind of shared the same concern with Mr. Gardner, and I did speak of that today regarding the TOT. I think that, based on my research and also my experience with what's going on, in other words, I, I'm, my workplace is not open, but I have been called back. And based on the volume of the calls that we're getting, when are you opening, when are you opening, when are you opening? I know there will be some strong demand for hospitality. I think TOT will pick up. There will be at least a burst of it. And I also think that we may be, we may be positioned quite well because I think people who are a little what's the word, a little hesitant to travel, who really want to get away, but might be hesitant to travel because of the crowd issue. I know that's a big thing. May kind of look to us because we're not as large and we're not as crowded and we're a little more spread out than some of the other valley cities where they are larger properties and closer together. So I think we have a possibility there that we may not, we may not be, experience as much pain when things reopen as some of the other cities. So and again, I know that we talked about triggers as we take a look at this. If we're not hitting benchmarks, then we'll have to take another look. So I would have to say, I'm very satisfied with getting my questions answered this morning. It's a lot of work. It is a lot of detail. You know, the spreadsheet for the capital improvements, I went through that quite a bit. There's quite a number of things that even say unfunded, so they're not even scheduled. I just want to thank, I, Jeffrey, I want to thank you with finance department for a great job. And my questions have all been answered, so I'm okay.
Thank you. I'm going to make some comments and then I'll go around again if we need to. I just want to give my position on the budget. I understand Mr. Betts's position, and he likes to get more into the weeds and get the questions answered. I do appreciate that sometimes. It does get a little tedious, but that's his process. I understand that Jan explained her process, but I want everybody to understand that each of us have our own process when it comes to being a policymaker in our community. And I don't want it to seem like that none of us are doing our job because that's the way it comes across sometimes when some people ask more questions than others. My process is, I, I deal with budgeting with my employer quite a bit, so I understand it. I do think municipal budgeting is quite difficult to understand, and it's taken me quite a few years to get on board with it. But I also don't forget the past of where we were at at one point where four hundred dollars was in the bank and we were struggling to make the cuts that were just very, very painful for our community. But because of that, a few of us sat on the city council that made those cuts and were able to get to a point where we are today. It is confusing sometimes when you hear we have eleven million dollars in fund balance, and then with some of us use the word reserve. We're not perfect when it comes to the proper terminology a lot of times, but we are very healthy. Let's just use that as a community. And because of the staff that we have and the, the process that we go through, we are in a great position financially for our community compared to what other communities are. Yesterday, I was fortunate enough to sit on a panel and talk about budgeting a little bit and listening to the other communities that are on that panel. And the millions and millions and millions of dollars that they're going to project to lose in their communities is going to really hurt their public safety, their, their frontline people, their staff and their community. They're going to have to make the cuts that we had to make five, six years ago now, have to prepare for what's going to happen in their next fiscal budget. We're in a great place. We did save up and, and for that rainy day, and that rainy day is here. We're able to, it's, it's just a little drizzle right now, and we're able to cover that and make sure that there's no leaks. And I think we're well set up for the future of Desert Hot Springs with this budgeting that we've done. And the professionals that you guys are here, Jeffrey and Chuck and the staff and, and the recommendations that you made, I'm very comfortable with. I read through the report of the weekend. I don't see anything where I would want to change anything at this point. I think we're in a good position, so appreciate all the comments this time. I'll take it back around one more time before we go into some motions. Anyone? Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I did have one, but I do believe that city manager asked it with the clarification on the, on the reserves and, and where we're at with that. And again, I'll echo your comments. And staff's done a fantastic job on this. Municipal financing is difficult. I spent years working with the Senate Ways and Means Committee up in Washington State and dealing with budgets that are a hundred times bigger than this, and they're even more detailed and intricate. And this was a piece of cake to that, and I appreciate Jeff's hard work and the city staff's hard work on putting this together. I am grateful that we're not in the position that the other valley cities are. We are going to be on the top of the heap as far as it comes to finances of any city in this valley. And I think that's something we're all, we can all be very proud of, and I'll be very happy to support this budget when it comes forward.
Anyone else? I'll go to public comments right now. I'll come back to you if you have more comments. Gerald, do you have any public comments on this item?
We have no one that is joining to give public comments. However, I do want to know for the record that we did receive written comments from Nicholas Leon. A copy was distributed to the council prior to the meeting and is available to anyone in partner class and will be included as part of the record.
Do we know if that's a resident of Desert Hot Springs?
There is no indication if he's a resident.
Thank you. Council, anyone else? Mr. Gardner, you're using up all the time now.
I know, and I apologize. I'll just get back to your question of whether that individual was a resident. I had a discussion with him earlier today. He is a resident of the city. And just for the record, he is suggesting some training programs for city PD and will pass those on to Chief Henson and let Chief Henson decide whether to spend his training budget on those programs or not. But I, I do think it worries, it is worth some discussion within the, within the police department itself, not necessarily with the council on, on whether those would be wise expenditures of police department training funds.
Ms. Pye, Ms. Griffith, Mr. Betts, anyone? Last chance, go once, go on twice. I got one, just one final comment.
Yep.
So what I would hope is what we're going to do is we have time between now and June thirty, when we have to adopt the budget. And I'm certainly not trying to accuse any council members of not doing their duties, but I, I've just been going through budgets for years as part of my career and certainly understand the municipal budget process. And it's okay with everybody. We could finalize this one at the next month meeting. Staffs, I've seen my emails, this got me the questions that I've asked, and I didn't surprise them, by the way, and gets anybody's wondering. We shortened this up quite a bit by asking some of these questions today earlier. I appreciate staff's help and getting back and being so responsive on this. Maybe I want to be a little more certain than other people do, but where we've been. And I think it's, it's certainly prudent to take that detailed look. So I'd ask that we finalize this budget and so that we could get a full council vote on it in favor at the next meeting.
All right, I got a, I can accept a motion now.
I move we adopt the budget as presented by staff.
I'll second. I have a question.
There's a motion and a second, Ms. Pye?
We're supposed to be going through this budget every three months. Is that correct?
That was a head nod by the city manager.
I, I missed that question, Mr. Mayor. What was it?
It was a question, are we going to the budget every three months, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, sir, I couldn't get to the unmute thing fast enough. She is correct. Especially this coming year, this is really going to be vital for everyone to take a look at it as we move forward. Rest, we're going to continue to report every week on our financial condition. And as things progress, you'll be well aware of what's happening, so we can make adjustments when, when necessary.
Thank you very much. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Betts?
I'm trying, I'll hold on a minute. I'm trying to think this one through.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
So my dilemma here is abstain or no, and I think probably just the easier way to go is just no, because based on the fact that I haven't had a look that I think I need to be sure that what we're looking at is correct.
Okay, motion passes with councilmember Betts opposed.
All right, item number six is the landscaping and lighting maintenance district, number one, intention proceedings for the levying collection of assessments. Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, so before your two resolutions, one, two.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sariyala.
Can we go back to public comment?
Yeah, I, I apologize. We had a, we had a request. We had a public comment that was the individual was trying to get into the meeting, could not get into the meeting, and they requested to speak now so they don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting. So I'm going to reopen, I'm going to put this item number six on hold, and I'm going to go back to item, our public comments and I'll open that back up. Mr. Sariyala, can you introduce that person?
Yes, we have Dottie Wilder on the line. Roberta?
Ms. Wilder, go ahead.
Miss Wilder, go ahead.
Okay, um, hi, I'm Dottie Wilder and I have um, a question about the wearing of mask in Desert Hot Springs. Um, what I had uh, read is that the um, Riverside County. Has uh, released a requirement to wear them. It's only a recommendation. And I wanted to find out what um, criteria the city of Desert Hot Springs is using to determine that we should still wear them. And uh, and, and when you plan to uh, have us stop being required to wear them. Being that it's going to be, and it has been over a hundred. And, and my feeling is that um, it's not healthy to be rebreathing direct shield air for long periods of time. Um, as a retired healthcare worker. So those are my, those are my questions. I would just like to know if there's some plan. That you have to uh, put an end to this or what criteria you use to determine that, that you think it's a good thing to keep doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilder, for your comments. Because they're in public comments, we can't answer those questions directly, but I'll have our city staff give you a call. I know our city attorney and myself have been in contact with you previously.
I didn't understand what you just said.
I thank you for your comments. Because you're in public comments, we can't answer those directly. I will have our staff contact you uh, later today or tomorrow after this meeting and give you the answer to that question. I know that I've been in contact with you and our city attorney's been in contact with you. Uh, so we'll give you an update on that. Uh, most likely it'll be tomorrow morning after this meeting ends.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience. I'm gonna, I'm gonna return to, I don't know, there was no other comments, Gerald?
That was all.
All right, I'm gonna return to item number six. Mr. Buckheim?
Mr. Mayor, before you proceed, I may have a recusal on this one. I have a business. One, two, zero, eight, four, Palm Drive, which is in. Landscape Lighting and Maintenance District number one, as shown on the map, so I will be recusing on this item. Um, there's two other items, seven and eight, where also have recusals, uh, conflict with the residents. For zone fifteen, zone seven, and zone nineteen. And on eight, for zone six and zone fourteen, should I recuse for all those now or are you going to come back to those?
That'd be fine. Anyone else have a refusal?
Well, I'll be leaving the, I'll be leaving the meeting until you come back to the other items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number six, uh, Mr. Buckheim?
Right, yes, thank you. So before your two resolutions, one to declare the city's intention to levy and collect assessments for the citywide landscaping, lighting, maintenance district one. Which has uh, one zone that encompasses the entire city. And um, and another zone, a second zone covering property on Palm Drive and Pearson Boulevard. The second resolution is to approve the annual engineer's report. Um, which uh, which uh, lays out the costs of the, the landscaping maintenance district. The collection and of the assessment will be used for the maintenance and repairs uh, to this. Excuse me, maintenance and repairs for, you know, city landscaping parts, median sidewalks and other facilities. This assessment will generate five hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars in revenue for the district. And according to the engineers reports, the cost of these services for next fiscal year is estimated over one point two million dollars. The difference of the six hundred forty-four thousand dollars will be covered by a transfer from the general fund. The resolution, oops, section seven of the resolution of intent needs to be corrected. The public hearing should be, should say Tuesday, July seventh, not Thursday. So this, this stack of staff recommends uh, approval of both resolutions. And this item will come back as a public hearing to the council meeting on Tuesday, July seventh.
All right, with that, do we have any public comments, Gerald?
No, we do not.
Any comments from staff or council? Entertainer motion?
Moves now, recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Pie, second by Mr. Griffith. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gardner?
Sorry, I couldn't grab my button there. I, I.
Councilmember Pie?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And item seven and eight, does anyone besides myself have conflicts on those items? All right, I'll be stepping away from the uh, the screen here for item seven and eight. I have a conflict. My residence is within five hundred feet of uh, of item seven and eight. I believe it's uh, numbers fourteen and thirteen. Mr. Griffith, it'll be your meeting.
Okay, so before your two resolutions, one, again, to run one to declare the city's intention to levy and collect assessments. Um, for the landscaping, lighting, maintenance district number two, which contains eighteen zones. The second resolution is to approve the annual engineer's report, which estimates the cost of maintenance and repairs of landscaping and other facilities in these districts. The costs of the maintenance is, is, in the districts are covered by the revenue collected from the assessments and do not require additional funding. Also for section seven, section seven of the resolution of intention needs to have the date changed. The public hearing, once the resolutions are adopted, will be Tuesday, July seventh and not June second. Staff recommends the adoption of both these resolutions.
Moves now, recommendation.
Second. You're on mute, Robert. You're on mute, Robert.
I don't think it's, it's letting him. I'm trying to do it as well and it's not letting me unmute him. I can go ahead and call for the vote. Does any discussion from the council? Now just uh, roll call vote. Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pie?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Griffith, if it's an I, just raise your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
It's the cat's fault.
Hey Gerald, isn't there a way that he can uh, back out and then come back in?
Yes, do you want to try that? Leave the meeting and then join back in with the link?
Or. Earlier, we had people that if they just re-muted and unmuted, that seemed to work too. No.
I'm trying to unmute him and it won't work either, so.
Robert, go ahead and back out of the meeting and then come back in. It won't let you go out of the meeting at all completely? Okay.
Gerald, can we have him call a number?
Yes, I think so.
Rebooting his computer.
I'm going to say some issues. We're going to take a recess for ten minutes and see if we can get Mr. Griffith back on. And then we'll come back to item number eight. Um, so it's eight, eight o'clock right now. We'll come back at eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, did you say?
Yes. Is everybody clearing out or signing off or just those people?
Everyone's going on mute and stopping their video.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Got you.
Yes.
So the cat wasn't sitting on your mute button?
Alright, everybody, we still have one minute. Remember, we are live.
Okay, now I have no audio.
We can hear you, Robert. Can you hear me? Robert, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my whole computer just froze up.
Alright, we got one minute left, and then I'm gonna give the meeting back over to you, Robert, to finish item number eight.
Okay. You get away.
Alright, day fifteen, we're back from recess. Again, we're on item number eight. And this is an item that I'll be accusing myself from. Mr. Betts also recused himself, so the media will be mayor pro temp at Griffiths.
Okay, Mr. Buckheim, where were we?
Okay, so it's about to go over. So item number eight. For you, we have two resolutions, one of which is to declare the city's intention to levy and collect assessments for the drainage assessment districts, number one, which contains sixteen zones. The second resolution is to approve the annual engineers' report, which contains estimates of the costs of the maintenance and repair of the landscaping, drainage, and other facilities within these districts. The costs of the maintenance are covered by the revenue collected from the assessments and do not require additional funding. Section seven of the resolution of intention also needs to have a correction. It needs to have the date changed. The public hearing of the resolutions are adopted will be Tuesday, July seventh, not Thursday. Staff recommends adoption of both resolutions.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move. We accept staff recommendations.
A second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we do roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, Mr. Betts is back. So the full council's back. We'll move to item number nine, which is a firework permits. Our community development director, Ms. Deming.
I'm gonna have Patricia Villagomez, Assistant Planner, do this presentation as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. The following is for five applications for the fireworks stands. Application number one is for the DHS Eagle football team, and that is located at thirteen two hundred Palm Drive. It's within the Stated Brothers Shopping Center. Application two is for Louie of the Valleys, located at sixty-five nine four five Pearson Boulevard, and that's within the Seven Eleven Shopping Center. Application number three is for the Souls Praising Heaven organization, located at seventeen zero zero one Palm Drive. That's in the Valero gas station. Application four is for the DHS Little League, located at fourteen two hundred Palm Drive, located in the Vaughn Shopping Center. And application number five is for the DHS Football Booster Club, located at one-two-four-two-five Palm Drive, and that's right next to the Desert Tires. TNT has provided a physical distancing plan. Some of the measures are providing hand sanitizer for the volunteers and all customers. They're also providing place markers on the ground to indicate the six feet distancing. And they're also providing all volunteers with disposable gloves and also providing them to change them frequently. That said, the fireworks committee is recommending that the city council make one of the following. Make an exception to the ordinance and approve all five applications subject to the conditions of approval, or approve the four out of five applications which are in compliance. That concludes my presentation. I am available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Do we have any public comments, Gerald?
No, we don't.
Alright, I just wanna make a comment, and then I'll get to you, Gary, next. I think we should approve all five. The town will... We've done this before. We're approved extra, and the volunteer organizations rely a lot on this. I know it's tens of thousands of dollars that they can put into their nonprofits. I am concerned about the desert tire location, though. I actually get a haircut there, and I think, not a desert tire, but the beauty salon or the haircut place next to it. And the parking lot is very, it's very small to get in and out of. So I don't know what the plan is for, maybe Patricia, you can talk to this a little bit, on their parking there. Today, when I was there, their parking lot is kind of overrun by cars being serviced and the haircut place next door. So, and we do have an ordinance not to park on unimproved surfaces, so that's kind of concerning to me, that location.
Yes, I did mention to them that there was no asphalt there, but they're saying that there is asphalt on that location.
There is a piece of asphalt, but you still have to drive on unapproved land to get to it. So it's just a suggestion that our staff look into it, and maybe there's a better location or better ingress, egress on there. That's all the concern I have on that one. Mr. Gardner?
Yes. About that. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. These are very worthwhile organizations. I think we should approve all five. Our ordinance says four. But last year, we approved five. Year before, you approved five. I'm wondering if maybe down the road, we ought to amend the ordinance to put in five. That being said, I share your concern. I get my beard done, same place you do, and I was looking at that as well today. I don't see a place for them to park or to serve their customers there. I also had some concern. I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust that the staff and the folks at TNT have figured this out, but the location at Valero seems a tad too close to a gas station for a fireworks stand. But if it applies with all applicable fire code and distancing requirements that the fire marshal has and the TNT have, then it's okay. But just looking at the picture, the satellite picture and stuff, it just kind of struck me as a little too close to a gas station there. So those are the two that I've got again, but I'm more than willing to approve all five of them.
Mr. Betts? You're still on mute.
Okay. Well, the mute button unmuted, right, Robert? That worked, huh? So the one at the Seven Eleven looks to be really tight. That parking lot's already tight, and you're gonna put that one in there. So I think the call would be for staff to take a look at these and do their magic and make them work out. And if it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving five rather than four, with the condition that staff will review the locations and make whatever adjustments they think they need to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pye, seconded. Mr. Griffiths, Ms. Pye, do you have any comments?
No.
And then I just wanna make one final comment. I remember when we brought this forward after the city lost the funding to actually put on large fireworks shows. This was an alternative to that, and the city council at the time had, I believe, ten applications, so we had to narrow it down, and four was the number we picked. So I think it's time that maybe we do up that number or just continue through this process. Either way. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths?
Aye.
Mayor Metis?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Item number ten is to continue from May nineteenth, two thousand twenty, appointment to the planning commission to fill vacancy for unexpired term. Mr. Betts, did you actually have time to get a name?
Yeah, you know, I tell you, this has been a really tough one. There's some really qualified people this time, and I was contemplating taking a little bit more time, but I think it's best to get this position filled. And we've got one candidate who is very familiar with the city. He knows it well. He's got a good history here. He understands development process. So I'm gonna nominate Ted Meyerhoffen. He's currently on the Public Safety Committee, and I understand that he will... That'll be creating a vacancy there, so I get to go through all this again. But that would be the nomination would be Ted Meyerhoffen to fill the unexpired term on the planning commission.
This is asking for ratification on Ted Meyerhoffen to be appointed to the Public Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any more discussion? Mr. Ms. Pye?
Mr. Betts, you gave us your word. What happened to giving us the name before?
Curfews. Conversation with you, which you thought, well, it'd be a good idea to do it, but if we hadn't got that policy in place yet, we're okay.
You told me you would do it.
Yeah, well, you know what? Thursday came and went. It was really busy, so we don't have the policy in effect. My apologies to Mr. Gardner, who wanted to see that ahead of time. But Gerald called me, and I just wasn't ready at that time, so made the decision between now and the time it was time to put it in place. And if we're gonna do that on the first unit agenda, fine, but I don't want to put it off any longer.
Mr. Gardner?
I would have to agree with that. You promised us two weeks ago that you would have that name in time. I'm sorry. I can't, I cannot take a name thirty seconds before I'm supposed to take a vote on something and approve it. I will be voting no for that reason.
Mr. Griffiths?
I, I... I was under the impression that you were taking time to continue going through the rest of the applicants. And so I studied them all again, and then when I got the notice for tonight's meeting, I noticed there was somebody new, which was Ted Meyerhoffen. And I know him. He's a nice guy, but I... It seems a little, how do I wanna put this? I don't wanna be rude, but his application did not come in until a week after the last council meeting. And I don't think it's fair to the applicants who all applied by the original deadline, who've been waiting all this time for us to choose someone who was not in the original group. I would prefer that you pick someone from that original group as opposed to someone that is a political appointee that you've already appointed, who came in at the last minute. And so it just, I think it sends the wrong message to people that are interested in providing a service and communicate... What's the word? I'm at a loss of words for it now, but you know, the original applicants, they're interested in providing a service to us, and I think that it just sends a wrong message that we're picking someone else who came in after the fact. So I don't know that I can support the decision.
Is Mr. Meyerhoffen still on the Public Safety Commission?
Yes.
So you'll be taking one commissioner off of one commission, putting on another commission?
Yeah, and you know, these aren't surprise appointments. Each of us make appointment based on who we've talked to. Ted has indicated for a long time that he would like to be on the planning commission, and I do review the applications. And I understand we got some new council members, but maybe it's fine to change the procedure. But the, the situation is this, is that we adopted a position where each council member will be pretty much free to point who they feel should be on that planning commission. And I understand people want advice and consent, but they also need to go and research the kind of problems that that was causing for a council politically, where we had very raucous times. And when everybody settled down and decided, you know, just let every council member appoint who they want so that we don't have a three-two majority nixing people's appointments. And that's what we settled in on, and it's worked very well. In case you haven't noticed, this council gets along really, really well, way better than it has in its history. And that's because we take certain steps like this. And so if we're going to go through where the council now picks them, the result of that's gonna be potentially, and the history of the council would say that's gonna be the case, that you're gonna now start turning something that's been a smooth process into a very political one. And then the next thing that's gonna happen is... Your, I'm sorry, I lost my train. The, you know, the point is unless you have some wild objection to somebody's qualifications, and you can certainly read every application that's in the mix before in a meeting and pick out who you might not like for some good reason. But it wasn't just within thirty seconds that you had an example, you had a list of people, and you could certainly read through every application, study it, figure out who you do like and who you don't like, and decide if you have any major objections. So I've been through the very raucous councils and seen the trouble that's gone on with appointments over planning commission. So if we want to head down that road, it's just, it's a really bad road, given the history of the city. And I understand that to new council members, it might seem like, well, we should do advise and consent like the Senate does, and you sure see the mess going on there. So, you know, if you want to hold off until the next meeting, there you go. You got however many weeks of notice, you got it here publicly announcing it from me that that's my pick. And then if you want to wait till the next meeting and vote no or yes or whatever you want to do, fine. So, Mr. Mayor, my motion is to nominate Ted Meyerhoffen pending ratification by the council whenever.
I already got your motion, and I already seconded your motion. I think your frustration is being misunderstood by the other council members. Other council members had a promise by you in a public study that you would let them know, because the new process that they want to adopt is that we allow the public to have a say in when people are appointed to these commissions, along with council members have time to vet themselves. I think that's what... Hold on. I allowed you, I allowed you to speak. Allow me to speak. So I think that's where everybody's going. So I'm trying to calm the the waters here a little bit. I do see some tension and I understand it. I understand what you're also saying about the former process, but I do think our process now needs to be polished a little bit also. And the reason for that is that we do not give the public enough time to understand who that person's gonna be appointed and make comments for or against that person, because your your opinion about somebody might not be the same opinion as others. And so there there is a process that needs to be taken.
Okay, so if I could respond to that, the public has the same opportunity to study the appointments, and I wasn't always
They didn't have any opportunity because you didn't announce what the
No, they have the same opportunity as I do. I I was not always a council member. I used to be an intense council watcher, and we would get out the agenda, and we would look and we would see all the nominations. And we would say, hey, you know, is there anybody here we object to? No, they all look okay. So whoever they pick, it's fine. I think we're making a bigger deal out of this nomination process than it is, and to suggest that just because the public doesn't know who's gonna be appointed immediately, if I'm sitting out there watching it, and it's a big objection to me, I'm gonna be at the ready to say, if this person nominates this one, I'm gonna speak against them, because I very much feel strongly against that person. But unless I see that happening, I'm gonna say, well, it doesn't matter who it is, but we've done that process all along, and now we're gonna go contemplate a policy to change it, which we haven't put in, which is not a fait accompli unless everybody here just wants to go ahead and change it.
So you have two, you have two options tonight. Either you continue down the path and we'll do a vote, or you can actually withdraw your your motion and table it till the next
Since you were gracious enough to give me a second, let's just see, let's run this one up the flag and see how it goes.
Sure. Any other comments? Mr. Gardner?
I resent being the assumption that my vote is something to be taken for granted. I take very seriously my role on this council. I take very seriously every single vote that I take. I am severely disappointed that you didn't follow the process that we had agreed to last week, which is why we had the new proposal before us at the next agenda item. And I if we're going to go down the approach that you want to take, Mr. Betts, we might as well just go away with the entire process of ratifying council appointments. And I don't think any of us want to go down that road. So I'm still voting no.
Okay, well, just I'm sorry.
Okay, and I have to say this, because it's not the first time it's happened. I know it's real easy to say there's new council members and and to infer that the way things were is the way they should be, or that the new person doesn't really understand the process or doesn't really know what they're doing. That whole thing with agreeing to let us know in advance a gentleman's agreement. Uh, that's not my issue. My issue is that you had a list of candidates that I thought you were going to choose from, and that's what I would expect. And so to throw somebody in after the fact, whose application came in after the fact, um, two weeks after the original deadline, says to me that I I don't know that it's the right choice. I don't think it sends the right message to the community or the residents that their interest in providing a service and contributing is is not is just not even considered. That's, I'm not saying that's the case. What I'm saying is, you have to look at the appearance. And if you tie it into a lot of stuff that's going around the world, is that people don't feel that they really have a voice. And that's what this says to me is, there's someone that comes in at the last minute that has already been appointed to something by you, and that's your choice. You had some really qualified people in that original list, including someone who was in a planning commission in another city. So I, that is my objection. It's not that you didn't let me know in advance. My big thing is, I don't think this sends the right message. And maybe I am the new guy, but you know what? That's my view of it from an ethical standpoint, and I don't, I don't think everybody thinks the same way as me. That's okay. But just because I'm new doesn't mean that my thoughts and my ideas are not valid.
Okay, so in the process of new council members coming on and old ones being around for a while, it provides some new ideas and some history. That's the whole reason we have staggered elections. And I don't consider, think anybody should take it as an insult, that I'm pointing out what this council went through before and providing the reasoning of why we adopted the protocols that we did. And I'm certainly am willing to listen to a council that wants to come along with new ideas. So I'm not leaving that impression with you at all or trying to. The second thing is, is I didn't see you on my sleeve for the past many weeks, as I go through and weigh the people, the applicants. I looked at every application. I weighed it carefully. I'm making, taking this decision as seriously as I ever have with these appointments. And it's, you know, it's nothing, I don't know if you used the word political or if I just heard it, but I'm picking somebody who has a history in the city, understands the development issues, what the failings have been on the planning commission, can see them, and has demonstrated that they know the direction of the city with a history of of the problems that have been around in the past, and has shared my concerns over the many development standard slips that we have had and put in place. And so that's who I'm picking, somebody, somebody who looks at a sidewalk and says, why do we have a three-foot-wide, wimpy, meandering sidewalk when every other city has a nice walking path on a six-hundred-foot-wide development or wherever, a six-hundred-acre development? Why do we have sidewalks in a develop or a development with a ten-foot setback when they should have a twenty, thirty, or forty, or fifty-foot setback on a main thoroughfare? I'm I'm looking at somebody who understands that. Why did a flood control channel get put in in a development that wasn't to county standards? And now we have to accept liability for that flood control channel when before the county would have been liable for it? You know, we we just went through a budget and we, those are past mistakes. Somebody understands those issues that have gone on in the city. So that's where the basis for the decision. Mr. Mayor, to cut this short, can we take this up? I'll withdraw my motion. Whatever motion anybody wants to make, uh, we'll move to the next meeting on this one.
I'm gonna get to Jan first, and then I'll discuss that with you.
My concern is about your word. All of us have I have a question for you, Gerald.
So I'm going with that, Jan. I want to withdraw the motion.
Okay, Russell, I'll I'll control the meeting. Just calm down for a minute and let me, let's Jan have her minute.
Um, I got a call because I'm with someone, working with someone else. And I, you also said you would call every person. He didn't get a call. I told him to call you, but, um, Gerald, did you announce to everyone else, everyone else that wanted to apply, that they could apply like Mr. Mayor Hoffen did?
Um, I send out a notice, so I post a notice of the vacancy, which is required by law under the Madi Act, posted on social media, posted on our website, and so that is how the public is aware that there is a vacancy and that they can apply.
You know that we passed the deadline. Did you send out another notice?
No, I did not.
I'm done.
Mr. Gardner?
Procedural question, if I could. Jennifer, once a motion is made, can it be withdrawn after it's been seconded?
I mean, the answer is technically yes, but I mean, at this, at this point, anyways, the answer is yes. It it, a motion is made, it has been seconded, the mayor does not need to call for a vote. Instead, it is up to the mayor, the mayor could ask if the motion maker would like to withdraw the motion and table this to the next meeting.
Mr. Betts, this is your opportunity.
Okay, so just to answer that question quickly, under Roberts' Rules of Order, once a motion has been made and seconded, it is the domain of the body and can't be withdrawn. There's no, hi, do you change your motion or hi, do you withdraw your second? It's dispensed with by voting on it and getting rid of it. However, under Roberts' Rules of Order, and since common practice has become to do like we're doing, hey, I'll withdraw my motion, it's become a little less formal, because that became customary. So we adopted Roberts' Rules of Orders, which does allow for that. And I understand you may be familiar with Roberts' Rules of Order, and that's the way it's handled. So that answers your question there. Uh, so following Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which is council adopted some time back, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion, and I'll make my appointment announcement ahead of the next council meeting.
All right, I'll withdraw my second at this time. Thank you for the lesson, Mr. Betts. Um, Ms. Pye?
And, uh, Gerald, would you announce that there's a new deadline?
Sure.
If somebody else wants to come in, everybody knows.
If that is what the council's direction is, then I'd be happy to do that.
Yes, I think most council would like to make sure that the the word is out there, so.
And I'm not under the impression that there was any deadline that was missed. Was there a deadline that was missed in that application?
Yes, Mr. Betts, we've gone over this many times. The deadline was missed two meetings ago, and you should have closed the application period. You reopen the application period for a commissioner to put his application in, because you did not want to
Sorry.
Well, either way, that's exactly what happened. So with that said, this item has been tabled to the next meeting. Move on to item number 11, a resolution of the City Council, many of the many meeting guidelines and procedures, policies regarding appointments to city boards and commissions. Mr. Gardner, Ms. Pye, this is item that you wanted on the agenda. It was approved by the City Council last meeting for discussion. Um, it is now on the agenda. It's all yours.
Um, would you like me to go, Jan? Okay. Um, Councilmember Pye and I, as the Subcommittee on Council Policies and Procedures, worked with our city attorney to develop this policy to address the situation that we just addressed. Our proposed policy does the following three things. It will be amending the city council's policies and procedures to require the council member making an appointment for a vacancy to notify the city clerk of the name of their proposed appointment at the time, in time, rather, for the name to appear on the public agenda for the council meeting at which time the action is to be taken. It requires the city clerk to include all of the applications received for the appointment by the deadline, in addition to the application from the proposed appointee in the agenda packet for both can council and public review, and it requires the proposed appointee to be present at the council meeting where the appointment is to be confirmed, to answer questions from the city council, if any. And the Subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Pye and myself would would recommend adoption of this proposed change to our meeting guidelines, policies, and procedures.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And I have comment.
Any public comments, Gerald?
We have none.
All right, move to council member comments, Mr. Betts.
Okay, so on the application requirements on this, if somebody puts in an application, then a position is filled, but they have their application in, do we throw all the old applications out and then, or do we hang on to them and save them for future references, somebody has previously indicated they'd like to be on a commission? What 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 are we doing here?
I can answer that. The same way we do all the time. If the person wants to, um, reapply, Gerald calls them, or they call Gerald and say, I want to reapply, and then the others come in.
Okay, so as we've looked at these in the past, we'll get a stack applications. Gerald, correct me if I'm wrong, but here's some people who have applied as first, second, or third choice. And sometimes you get those in your applications to look at, along with the new ones that come along. So I'm just asking for clarification here. My understanding is, is that Mr. Meyerhoffen had an application in before. But that's beside the point, it's past issue. The the question is, just for clarification, do we save prior applications if somebody indicated they want to be on the planning commission? Or do we scrap those and everything has to be a new application with each new appointment?
Would it help if I explain what the process is now? So
Please.
Okay, so when there's a vacant, okay, so we're in a two-year term, which just started this past January, 2020, and will go to 2022. So within that two-year term, if a vacancy occurs, and whoever the council member is appointing to replace that person, I will put out the notice as pursuant to the to the Madi Act, where we will solicit any new applications. And then I go back to the original list of when we made the appointments for that term to see if those applicants are still interested. Does that make sense?
Is that the current process you're proposing, Mr. Gardner and Ms. Pye?
Yes, that that process stays the same, and as if I recall, those applications stay active for two years unless withdrawn by the person who 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 applied. So the way I understand it operates, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Soriano, is that a vacancy occurs, you publish the notice, you also check with the previous applicants if they're still interested. You take the the notices for the people that are still interested, plus any new applicants that that apply by the deadline, and you package those together and give those to the council member who is responsible for making the appointment, correct?
Correct. So then to to finish my question then, so then if there was somebody in the application process, they had indicated that they would like to serve on that commission, even though there hadn't put in a new application, that they still would qualify, and is provided that the city clerk had provided the council member with the stack of applications, well, then that person wouldn't have been a last-minute application. Um, they would have been a a legitimate application. Is that correct? And and would that be the final determiner, the city clerk providing the list to the council member? Or does the procedure require the council member to go and actually verify that the, what they've been given is true and correct?
May I? Ms. Pye?
There's a deadline. They have to apply by the deadline. If you give someone else an opportunity to apply, everyone else has to have
But working through the process, if somebody has previously applied within the two years, as stated by Councilmember Gardner, they aren't a new applicant, they're an existing applicant, correct?
I just told you about the deadline. This was after the deadline.
If
No one else had an opportunity.
Well, I I'm trying to clarify this now. What, you're you're assuming that everything that came in was a new application. I'm trying to suggest if somebody a year and a half ago puts in an application that they'd like to be a planning commissioner, and they don't get it, and then a new round comes up, they aren't, they are, they have got their application in before the deadline. Is that correct? That's what my original question is. If they if they got their application
If they did not tell the city clerk that they want to be on the list before the deadline, no.
Okay, so indicating you want to be on the list is checking the box and saying, hi, I would like to serve on this commission, and here's my application. We just need to make it clear to the public how the process is gonna work, because there's lots of people out there that have applications in. I've gotten a call, said, hey, I've had my application and I'd like to serve. Do I have a chance to do this? I say, yeah, your application's already in, that's good. And those have been the conversations that I've had with the city clerk. So I'm just asking the, whoever is working out these details, that specific question, so everybody's clear. I'm not arguing with anybody. I'm just trying to find out what the case is.
Well, I haven't changed any of those procedures at all. Those procedures stay in effect from what we've done for. The only additional requirements that we are adding to our policy is the ones that we've outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Gardner, Ms. Pye, I think the point that's trying to be made here is that it's not clarified when applicants are in the file that Mr. Soriano has, he, if they marked Planning Commission, Public Safety Commission, CCAC, he puts them into the the packet as still valid applications. I think what Mr. Betts is asking is that can we clarify that a little further by having those individuals called and then ask if they want to be considered for that position that's open, so that no one's misunderstanding the fact that they do or do not have an application in for that position?
Well, my understanding, that's what we do. Isn't that correct, Mr. Soriano?
But he extended the deadline, which, Gerald, I think if you extended the deadline for one person, you needed to do it for all.
I agree with that, but nobody extended any deadline, is what I'm saying.
We're not arguing at this point, or debating at this point. Gerald, can you answer that question? When you, when you have all your applications in your file, do you, and there's a planning commission opening, do you call each and every applicant to make sure they still want to be considered?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a process. That's what needs to happen. That's what we're trying to get at, is to make sure that all applicants that are in that file still want to qualify, be quali, will qualify for that position to be sorry, tongue tied, it's getting late. Is that what you're trying to get at, Mr. Betts, is to make sure that they're eligible?
I'm just trying to find out what thinking has gone into, how applications are gonna be made, and that be quite, as I've worked through this process many times, I've said to Gerald, hi, please give me a list of everybody who's been interested in this position, and let me look at who it is. And I get those. And then Gerald will And then Gerald will send me periodically, hey, here's some new ones that have come in. And my assumption is that everybody that's come in has come in under the deadline, or our city clerk, who's pretty darn good, I haven't seen make a mistake once, isn't going to send it to me. And I'm going to rely on that. I'm going to rely on anybody that I nominate or that any council member nominates will have the blessing of the city clerk that this person's qualified to do that, and that you don't just have council members running off
I guess the point is Let's try to, let's just use real-world examples here.
Well, that's a real-world example. I got you. I understand.
But let's say, Mr. Meyerhoffen, who was the last item, you know, was he in the first round of candidates for you to pick from?
He was in, yes, he was in the list.
That's the thing. Ms. Pye doesn't, Ms. Pye doesn't think he was, and that he came in afterwards, and that's her concern. So I think we've clarified it with Mr. Gardner, Mr. Pye. I think you guys have enough to go on there to make a motion to be able to get this moved along. I think, Mr. Betts, you've made your point clear. Um, can I get a motion?
I move we adopt the policy as recommended by the Subcommittee.
Ms. Pye?
We have a motion seconded.
I didn't have a motion. I had a report and I, I'm sorry, maybe I did. I apologize. It's getting late. Um, any other comments? Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Uh, you know, I'm going to say that we need to stick with um, what was worked out in the council in the past to avoid um, turning this into a political process. I believe these council members should be able to uh, pick a appointee, as long as there are any wild objections, that that would stand. And that would, from the long history of the city, that, so my vote will be based, it'll be no based on that.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Menace?
Aye.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts opposed.
With that said, uh, do I have any other public comments that didn't make it into the, into the meeting, Mr. Soriano?
No, we do not.
All right, future dead items can be discussed with the City Manager's Office. Uh, no other public comments. Our next meeting will be June 16th at 6:00 PM uh, via Zoom for for right now. Um, while we continue to social distance. Um, with that said, we are adjourned.